Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sago, ani, budju, wajaya, kwekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. We were just meeting in Committee of the Whole closed meeting. We discussed pending acquisition or disposition of land, the St. Joseph, St. Mary's School property. So with that, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. The council rise from Committee of the Whole closed meeting without reporting.
And that carries. Next, we will move to the approval of the addits. We have an additional miscellaneous business item and also a new motion that's been added because of its time sensitive. Can I have a motion to approve the addits? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Allen. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. We do have a presentation this evening. Helen Humphries, the City of Kingston poet laureate, will present a poem in recognition of National Poetry Month. Ms. Humphries.
I'm just going to read you a loose sonnet in honor of National Poetry Month. Nothing holds its truth for long enough, not our words or our desires, our small fidelities to our small fires, what we have loved on this earth and in one another. By the time the light at the window can be named, it has already shifted. Words collapse, the places in ruins, love spools out to vapor. Home leaves us, not the other way around. We don't reside, we touch down. But what was once true remains so, and although we must leave everything, it is possible to return to what was sanctuary, to enter the building or the concert hall or the act of love, to see again the field of bright flowers, to open the book. It is possible to return to what was sanctuary and find our shelter there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So moving on, we do have several delegations this evening. Our first delegation is Michael Fraser, Vice Principal, University Relations, and Leslie Dalson, Executive Director, Athletics and Recreation, Queen's University, who will appear before council and speak to Clause F, Report Number 46, received from the Chief Administrative Officer, with respect to the Queen's request for extension to temporary noise exemption, West Campus Sports Field and Richardson Stadium. And just a reminder to all delegations that you have five minutes.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you briefly tonight. As the Mayor said, I'm with Leslie Dalson, Executive Director, Wery Leslie of Athletics and Recreation at Queen's. We are here this evening to speak briefly about the Queen's request for an extension to our temporary noise bylaw. What we're seeking is a one-year extension in the same terms and conditions as the exemption that we received last year for the Richardson Stadium and our northwest campus fields. Council first granted the, our noise exemption in July 2014, and in May of last year approved an extension until June 30th of this year. It was our hope then that the city's review of the noise bylaw would be completed before that expiry date. However, we understand now that the bylaw review process will be extended to allow for more consultation by the city. And so we decided to make a request for an extension in order to ensure our athletic facilities continue to be available for both Queen's users and the broader community. I'll ask Leslie now just to say a quick word about some of the conditions about our temporary exemption, Queen's complaint resolution process, and some of the sound mitigation measures we're implementing in the new stadium.
Thanks, Michael, and thank you, everyone. As Michael mentioned, there are a number of conditions attached to our bylaw, our temporary noise bylaw exemption, including the, just let me go forward here for a sec, including the implementation of all the recommendations outlined in a sound engineering report that was done in 2014, ongoing communications with user groups and the community, limiting the frequency, volume, and duration of amplified sound, implementing administrative controls and putting in place an effective system to respond to complaints that may be received, and reporting use, field use, to city on a monthly basis. Queen's has met and/or exceeded each of these conditions and has taken several additional steps in our outreach to our user groups and our ongoing communications and collaborations with our neighbors. We also took a number of steps to physically reduce the amount of sound emanating from the fields, including, for example, rescheduling and/or moving a number of activities. As you may be aware, to be, to assist with the communication and to respond to Queen's, the conditions of our bylaw exemption, Queen's established a dedicated website and recording hotline. The website includes information such as updates, contact information, monthly schedules for all of our fields, and our hotline and complaints procedure. Calls to the hotline results in athletics facility staff person being deployed immediately to the field. Our facility manager follows up with the complainant with a call the next day. And I should say that calls to the hotline also generate an immediate email message with the content of the call being sent to the manager of licensing scene and enforcement at the time of the call. This past year, the university received two complaints with respect to sound in our west campus fields. One was related to a coach who was shouting too loudly. Upon receiving the hotline call, our staff responded immediately to the field and the situation was resolved. That occurrence happened during a time that would not be prohibited under the existing noise bylaw. The second complaint was not related to the use of the athletic fields, but was related to a student-organized cultural event to celebrate the Iranian New Year. The event involved amplified music, but the university was not made aware in advance that music would be played, and the organizers subsequently weren't alerted to the noise bylaw requirements. In response to that complaint, Queen's is currently reviewing its procedures authorized for authorizing events on campus grounds to ensure that all users of the facilities are consistently informed of the noise bylaw requirements. We remain committed to continuing to work with our neighbors to address concerns as they arise. Now, with respect to the Richardson Stadium program, just a brief update on the revitalization of the stadium. Construction of the stadium is going proceeding well, thank God, and will be scheduled to be completed prior to the start of our football season in September. With respect to sound in the stadium, as a component of the project, both a sound and lighting consultant were included in the design team. Sound and light tests were conducted, and the design for the new stadium is highly customized in both light and sound, and will significantly improve on the current situation that our neighbors experience, and will reduce the light and sound that will travel from our fields.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. We look forward to hosting another update meeting with our neighbors in late June.
Available for any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Schell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Could you expand on when you talked about reporting the field use to the city in terms of how many uses you have put in the, in the request?
So the, the current, thank you, the current application is consistent with what we've had in the past, and that is 93 occurrences for the two fields at the northwest corner of our, of our precinct, and 15 occurrences for the Richardson Stadium.
Counselor, oh, yeah, Counselor Schell.
And the public consultation that you're planning to have in late June, is there somewhere where people, where you will put the announcements of that so that people will know how to come to them?
Yes, so typical and consistent with what we've been doing in the past, is we've been doing advertisements, but also mail drops to all the about 400, 450 houses that are immediately adjacent to the property. So we'll continue to do that.
Counselor Strout.
Thank you, Your Worship. Regarding the north field first, so the, which was, as I understand, the source of the greatest complaints in years past from residents in my district, you're asking for the same exemption as last year, which is exemption for 93 events. How does that compare to the number of events that were scheduled in the last 12 months?
So the 93 occurrences are, that number was generated based on the, the best-case scenario of our, our varsity teams playing and the potential for them to advance into the playoffs and potentially host championship games. So each year, we can't predict what the outcome of that might be because it's based on the seasonal records and how they fare in their playoffs, if they're, whether they are scheduled for home or away games. The 93 occurrences also allowed for a number of community events to take place on the field being used by our various community groups. So there's a balance between, that happens between the number of events that we have and the allowance that we have in the second half of the year is when the majority of our community users are using the field.
Right, so it's that, that subset that I think many of the complaints are justified that I'm hearing, because there's no, they have no way of knowing how many times they're going to rent out the fields to community groups that might be using them late into the evening, and we know that, that there are many such groups that might be interested. So we don't really have exact numbers, I guess, of the athletics programs, but I guess they're, because it's all one, it's a 93 event exemption, it could potentially mean, you know, 50 events, say, to community groups, which would be something that would generate complaints, I can foresee. So that's the element, I think.
So is there a question, Counselor Schell?
Yeah, so I'd like, if you could, to break that down into which ones are community groups and which ones would be athletic events, and if there's any way you could predict that in advance.
So it's very difficult, I'll do my best. It's very difficult to predict where we're going to end up in advance of the year because it totally depends on the strength of our teams and their ability to advance into the playoffs. If they consumed all of their own time and advanced, every team advanced, and they hosted championships and what have you, there would probably be around 25 occurrences left in the second half of the year. And that was the number that we determined based on what was a typical field use for community groups, high schools, elementary schools, and the ability to host events like CASA or things like that that were related to what the community felt was important. So that's the breakdown. We may go through the year, not have success in our varsity teams, and then there would be more occurrences that would happen in the second half of the year. I should also point out that just because we have the 93 occurrences doesn't necessarily mean that we use them. We do not schedule back-to-back-to-back-to-back weeks in a row of events on the field, and we use great, we exercise great judiciousness in determining whether we're going to hold an event or not. And so as a result, in some cases, we've hosted less than 93 events. But our challenge becomes if our teams advance and we're in a situation where we've used the majority of our occurrences, the bylaw process may take longer than what is required for us to allow the community groups to actually use and access the field in the second half of the year. So that's where we, we've tried to calculate this, this balance that allows us to meet the needs of both groups.
Counselor Neal.
Thank you. Just two quick questions. First of all, I'm a little concerned with the idea of only circulating to the 400 immediate neighbors. I represent Williamsville and the, and the southwest corner of my district, Johnson, Palace Road, Brock Street. There were issues with noise in the past, and I don't think that they would qualify for your circulation. Could I encourage you to do perhaps a postal walk using, liberally using the postal codes? And that would allow you possibly to reach more than you need to, but that's, I think, is far better than reaching fewer than you need to. Perhaps you could comment on that?
Yeah, certainly. We can, we can allow for much more public posting. We'll do something in the newspaper. We can extend the, the catchment area of where we would move our, move our notices out to.
And I will say, and I'll, I'll find a way to put this in the form of a question. Since you've added the mitigating measures that you have applied, have you received fewer immediate complaints? I know I have as the district counselor.
So in the past two years, we've received one complaint related to the fields, the use of the field, and that was the complaint that we received this year during a time which we were allowed to conduct the activity that the complaint was about. The other complaint that we've received is the one related to the, our students celebrating their Iranian New Year. So we've received one complaint in the last two years related to those fields from an athletic perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Our next delegation this evening is Michael Capon, who will appear before council and speak to Clause 1, Report Number 47, received from the CAO with respect to the red light camera program.
Mr. Mayor and Counselor, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak about the red light camera program. The question before us is, how do we improve the safety of our streets? The red light camera business case study report projects a 25% reduction in T-bone collisions, coupled with a 15% increase in rear end collisions. That sounds like an overall reduction, except that there are already many more rear end collisions than T-bone, which means the percentages translate to 15 fewer T-bone collisions and 26 more rear end collisions, for a net increase of 11 collisions per year. The reduction in T-bone collisions will result in 5.4 fewer injuries, and the increase in rear end collisions will result in 5.7 more injuries. Even these projections could be optimistic. In a report from 2012, the Waterloo Recorder reported that at camera-controlled intersections, T-bone collisions fell only 13%, and collisions in which a driver ran a red light fell 11%. On the other hand, total collisions increased 31%, turning collisions increased 36%, collisions causing injury increased 51%, and rear end collisions increased 63%. So far, you've studied one side of the equation, imposing more controls. I'm here to ask you to study the opposite approach, reducing controls. With the right design approach, removing controls makes streets safer. In an unregulated environment, drivers instinctively slow down to the speed at which their natural instincts can guide their reactions. Even at low speeds, drivers can get to their destinations faster because low-speed flow is more efficient than high-speed stop and start. I show this video of Addis Ababa not as an example of good design, but to demonstrate the natural instincts that people have to navigate slowly and safely through a highly complex, moving environment. Traffic signals could never achieve this level of efficiency. This footage from San Francisco in 1906 shows what streets used to be like, utterly chaotic. In an attempt to make streets safer and more efficient, traffic engineers segregated road users and began to impose rules and controls. The main outcome of this approach was to create the necessity for more rules and controls. The fact that we're having this discussion today suggests that there is no end to this slippery slope. If we install cameras at a few intersections, they will proliferate, just as signals have. Here's a video of an Auckland intersection, on the right with signals and on the left without. Last fall, Kingston experienced widespread signal failure due to a power outage. Police reported only one collision, as if they were surprised. If we were to suddenly turn off all the traffic signals in Kingston, what do you think would happen? Does it surprise you if I suggest that drivers would navigate the streets safely using their own intelligence and discretion, and would do so with a high level of generosity and courtesy? Don't take my word for it, study it. This isn't about cameras at a few intersections, it's about choosing a vision of what we want our streets to be like. Do we want regulations, controls, fines, segregation, and hostility? Or do we want freedom, diversity, generosity, courtesy, and community?
Thirty seconds.
You've studied the former option, please study the latter one, then decide.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next delegation this evening is Luke Harris, who will appear before council and speak to Clause 1, Report Number 47, from the CAO regarding agreements required for the red light camera program.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for hearing me again. Today, I ask that you vote in opposition to the installation and use of red light cameras. The distorted revenue model, in fact that red light cameras cause more overall collisions, should be enough to convince you, but there's more. Let's take a look, let's take a brief look at the current state of Kingston's intersections. So here's a much smaller intersection, almost gets a whole bunch more time to make a decision This is the new approach they're doing in the United States, by the way. They started in 2012, and they've eliminated almost virtually all their collisions and violations. They're taking out red light cameras in multitude of US cities right now, banning them in Florida, banning them in California because they're just socially negative and they cause more collisions. Okay, so as you can see, red light cameras shouldn't be justified. I just showed you, in Kingston, we need a more consistent approach. Fix this using a modern-day solution, where an engineer considers each intersection's variables, ensuring a calculated yellow light time for that particular intersection. Doing so will place the dilemma zone in the best possible place, allowing citizens to stop safely. This positive method produces better safety results than any red light camera program, it's proven. This is not about sporadically adding a second or two here or there, it's a calculated approach, and it works. The MTO guidelines of three to five seconds is the minimum. They encourage each city to adjust the times appropriately. Do this with a modern-day engineering solution, combine it with an intersection safety awareness campaign, and I believe Kingston will become a Canadian leader in intersection safety. This should be the focus of council this evening, positive encouragement first. I think the business case for the cameras provided to the city is a distorted sales pitch for red light cameras, and the ethical values of the company who provided it should be questioned. The study attempts to hide the fact of more overall collisions by cleverly using percentages. The statement showing a 25 decrease in right-angle collisions with a 15% increase in rear enders is misleading. Turning those into real numbers makes it immediately clear, red light cameras cause more overall collisions. More collisions means more injuries, some of them minor, but red light cameras hurt more people. Who are we to decide on severity? The revenue model is equally distorted. Flashing $4.8 million of potential revenue, then slashing it to $970,000, even this slash number is questionable. Consider the data collected. Six hours of weekday data during rush hour and a heavily traveled off-peak time. Hand-picked data points, chosen to support a heavily inflated revenue model. An accurate picture could have been produced by simply collecting data over a 24-hour, seven-day period. That way, we wouldn't be left guessing the number of violations at off-peak times. The study didn't adequately consider the repeated data a month later, when it found a lower violation frequency, 63% of the previous total. They didn't consider that. It also goes on to ignore the significant costs to the city and its required resources. This revenue model was cleverly written to sell us cameras, not promote safety. The study puts money over safety, admitting red light cameras cannot be justified in reducing collisions. It's in the report, they cannot justify it by reducing collisions.
Thirty seconds.
It finds the anomaly at Princess and Sir John A. McDonald, where one approach is 30 times the violations, looks at as a revenue opportunity rather than showing something's wrong. Mayor, council, think about the video I showed you. You've seen the current state of affairs in Kingston and no way can do better. I've also shown you that the business study is a mere sales pitch, putting revenue ahead of citizen safety. How can we consider implementing a red light camera program where the revenue model was falsely inflated, didn't include significant city costs, and plans to increase collisions? This is not a missed opportunity for a red light camera program. Say no to the cameras. If not, this will be, I got one sentence.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's make Kingston great.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor, Counselor Neal.
Just very quickly, I know part of what you're lobbying for is extending the amber light portion. I have read some traffic engineers' reports that suggest that beyond the kind of three to five seconds that's recommended, there quite possibly is a negative effect because people then think they have more time to run the yellow light. Do you have any comments on that, on that observation?
Yes, no, that is a great point, and thanks for bringing that up. And that's why what I'm trying to show here is this is a calculated approach, and this is, this is a modern look, and American engineers have shown, because they went back, they said there hasn't been a progressive study done on calculating those times in over 30 years. And so what they're showing now is each intersection needs to be considered as its own entity. So you can't just say, you know, 3.5 seconds is good for this intersection, or it's not good for that intersection. You need to look at things such as the distractions at that intersection, you need to look at things as the material of the road and the demographics that go through the intersection. So like Princess and Gardeners will get a lot more heavy trucks as opposed to say someone out near me. And then the engineer now in the States is allowed to use the 85th percentile of actual speed or the posted speed limit, whichever is greater. And what that allows engineers to do is not just guess at the yellow light time, but to control the dilemma zone. So the dilemma zone is where we, as a driver, when we approach that intersection, when the light goes yellow, it helps us decide, do we hit the gas or hit the brake? And so what the engineers have decided, if you can actually put that dilemma zone in the best spot, it removes any excuse someone might have for trying to go through it, allowing a police officer to maybe land a dangerous driving charge to help get these guys off our streets faster, because we can say, look, we calculated, that is the best chance you have at stopping. So if you don't choose to stop, you know, we will charge you with dangerous driving because we've proven to you, right? And it also looks at weather, right? Because Kingston, we've got a lot of weather, so, but anyways, this is a proven approach, and it's new.
But anyways, this is a proven approach and it's new, it's still, and thank you.
Thank you, are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Are there any other delegations to be added? Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship and through you, I would, I have a motion here to add a delegation that Mr. Robert Casista and have it ready for the clerk.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to add Mr. Robert Casista to speak to the red light camera program. So we will call the vote, is that seconded? Seconded by Counsel Holland? Please vote. And that carries. Are there any other delegations to add? Seeing none, Mr. Casista, who will speak to council again with respect to the red light camera program.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, my fellow citizens. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address city council. I'm speaking in opposition to red light cameras in the city of Kingston and urge council to vote against this proposal. I ask council to trust and work with citizens of Kingston to improve safety on the roadways, not set out monetary fines from anonymous corporation in Toronto. No city currently using red light cameras in Ontario has a population under five hundred thousand people. The fact that we are considering implementing strategies of municipalities three times larger than us makes me question the sustainability of the city. On social media, I have seen many comments on this issue. Many red light camera opponents typically condemn the program as a cash grab that will not be effective. Many of us see it as a breakdown in the trust and partnership between the government and its constituents. The reasons many red light camera supporters used to promote this technology displayed a lack of knowledge of basic traffic laws and a lack of understanding of the capabilities of red light cameras. Many people genuinely believe that red light cameras will stop people running yellows or blocking intersections, or that they will take habitual violators off the roads. Red light cameras were not designed to address any of these issues. It's a program that treats the symptoms while ignoring the disease. Many proponents commented that red light cameras would allow police to focus on more important issues. If red light runners were the only threat to public safety, this may be a legitimate viewpoint. Unfortunately, speeding, tailgating, aggressive driving, unsafe lane changes, rolling stop signs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, happen on our city streets all the time. Red light cameras will do nothing for these circumstances. We still need police patrolling our streets, acting as a deterrent and prosecuting those who deserve it. Remember, a red light camera fine does not include demerit points. They can't, the driver isn't identified. The registered owner of the vehicle is responsible to pay the fine. You will not lose your license from multiple violations. Those with the financial means will simply pay the fine, those that can't end up driving an unregistered vehicle. A green light does not mean close your eyes and stomp on the gas. You are to proceed only when safe to do so. Just because you aren't found at fault in the accident investigation doesn't mean you weren't part of the problem. Defensive driving campaigns should be part of any plan to increase public safety. They not only address traffic violations, but provide strategies to keep our citizens safe on the road. Traffic will only get worse as our population grows. We need a comprehensive approach to these problems. Let's acknowledge that our drivers' education does not stop after a road test. Let's streamline our traffic patterns. Let's extend our yellow and all red light times when required. Let's make public transit more practical. Let's calm down and acknowledge that we all make mistakes out there. Let's change attitudes, not just punish mistakes. We can do it, drinking and driving, wearing seatbelts, distracted driving. These things have started to become socially unacceptable and we've seen decline with aggressive public awareness campaigns. Once we've educated our public on the rules of the road and how to apply defensive driving practices, once we've taken the time to change attitudes, once we've ensured our roads and intersections are as safe as they possibly can be, once we've done all that and the problem persists then, and only then should we begin to consider automated systems as potential solutions. Let's drive safely because it's the right thing to do, not because we're afraid to get caught. The participation in local politics demonstrated here tonight is a metaphor for why red light cameras should not be adapted anywhere. At council meetings, citizens have the opportunity to observe our local politicians in action. We can address council and make statements or ask questions. Regardless of the outcome, we at least had our chance to be heard. When red light cameras issue a fine, they shut down the dialogue. The dialogue between the police officer and the accused and between the accused and the court system. Decisions are made behind closed doors with only a few photographs as evidence. This type of prosecution is akin to the city shutting council doors and only allowing citizens to respond after decisions were made. If the city passes the red light camera proposal, it will demonstrate that it is only interested in punishing its citizens. It sends the message that it is more interested in ruling rather than representing its population. It will be a clear sign that public safety will only be addressed when there is a dubious promise of profit. Once we go down that road, it'll be very difficult to find a way off of it. I implore council not to go down that road, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. You mentioned something that I have heard from someone else when you mentioned extend the all-red time. I gather that that's one of the methods that's used, that at the stop, four-way stop, everybody has to stop for a certain length of time.
Absolutely, it actually happened, I don't know the exact date, a few years ago they started implementing it in Ontario anyway, where you used to see the light would change green and automatically red, sorry, the automaticity of it was to change to green. There's a pause in there right now, I do a three count most of the time and it's about that, so about one and a half seconds, I figure. Yellow light times do give people more time to clear the intersection, more time to make decisions. And longer red times mean the intersection are clear before somebody goes through.
I was interested in your comment about the all-red, so you would be in favor of extending that, say two, three, four seconds so that everyone had to stop at the same time before the green?
Depending on the intersection and being, it'd have to be studied first by somebody that knows a little bit more about this than myself. But a longer intersection would logically, by my thought process, need more time to make sure that cars can clear it before people start proceeding into it.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, next we have a briefing this evening. Chief Jill Larachelle and Sergeant Darren Kiel, Kingston Police Services, will provide a briefing with respect to current traffic enforcement practices and the proposed red light camera program.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. I'm here with Traffic Sergeant Darren Kiel, who oversees five constables in the traffic section, as well as Constable Smith is in the back corner there. He specializes in traffic. He's actually told me maybe you should be my bodyguard tonight, but we'll go on. So I'll begin by stating that the Kingston Police endorses a red light camera program. The red light cameras are a great safety initiative, designed to discourage drivers from running red lights. I am familiar with the Ottawa program, which has shown to increase public safety by reducing aggressive driving and decreasing the incidence of red light violations. The number one complaint from the community is about road safety. It's about vehicles not observing posted speed limits. It's about vehicles driving through amber and red lights. And it's about distracted driving. These complaints are reinforced through our consultation with the public, online surveys, community focus groups, which guides us in completing our business plan. Whether one agrees or disagrees with the use of red light cameras, they are a proven enforcement tool used across North America, Australia and Europe. The concept of taking a photo of a vehicle's plate going through a red light and sending the ticket to the registered owner of the vehicle works. As you have seen from the business case report, red light cameras reduce the number of side impact collisions, thus serious injuries and property damage. T-bone collisions are the most severe type of collisions that often results in serious injuries or death. Sergeant Kiel and I have responded to too many of these types of accidents not to support red light cameras. As to a fine, it is three hundred and twenty-five dollars, where two hundred and sixty goes to the city, sixty goes to the victim's surcharge and five dollars goes for court costs. The fine is set up by the ministry and it's to educate drivers on the seriousness of violating red lights and holds them accountable. At times, it is difficult for police to enforce red light infractions since police must follow offenders through the intersection in order to stop and identify the driver. One needs to weigh the decision of pursuing the suspect vehicle as it may jeopardize other vehicles and drivers in the intersection. Red light cameras program frees police officers valuable time to enforce other type of road safety violations such as speeding and distracted driving. It comes down to the impossibility of my officers, those assigned to general patrol and to traffic, to attend and monitor all of the high-risk intersections. The camera provides consistent enforcement twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. In my experience, red light cameras bring a value of adherence and compliance to highway traffic laws. Street signage of the camera's existence will generally affect driving habits of motorists. Driver awareness will assist in the education process. This is usually consistent throughout all intersections after drivers become attuned to the possibility of an active red light camera. Public awareness of red light cameras reduces not only the violation of red lights, but reduces aggressive driving behavior associated to running red lights. This benefit is proper driving spreading through intersections without red light cameras. Not stopping for a red light is an offense under the Highway Traffic Act. Not stopping for an amber light is also an offense under the Highway Traffic Act. And if you can't stop for an amber light, you best articulate to the police officers why you can stop. If stopped by a police officer, both offenses are linked to a fine and demerit points. A suggestion regarding a longer amber light is problematic as it may encourage a motorist to continue his/her speed through an intersection instead of stopping for the light. It may not be viewed as a requirement to stop or even taken seriously. To clarify, as opposed to the police officer stopping a motorist, the red light camera will only capture those who fail to stop a red light and only the owner of the vehicle will receive a fine. Red light cameras ensure a vehicle owner is aware of how someone is driving his or her car. It's the added benefit of increasing responsibility of the owners to ensure road safety. The red light camera program has been enforced for many years and I'm not aware of any legal challenge about the program itself. The impact of red light cameras on police and emergency vehicles responding to critical incident is minimal. It obliges all first responders to stop at red lights and when safe, proceed before green, provided by the regulations in the Highway Traffic Act. Red lights running can be fatal. So in conclusion, Kingston Police strongly supports the installation of red light cameras at high collision intersections. It's about working together to ensure the safety of the public. It's another tool used to complement police efforts in enforcing the Highway Traffic Act. And simply put, failing to stop at a red light puts everyone at risk. Thank you for your time. At this time, I'll ask Sergeant Kiel to make a statement, more of an operational basis and would certainly open up questions after, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Patterson, City Council, members of the media and the public. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to offer you a police operational perspective to traffic management and control within the city of Kingston, specifically with relation to proposed red light camera project. My name is Darren Kiel and I've been a police officer with the city of Kingston for twenty-eight years. I'm currently the sergeant in charge of our traffic and safety unit, which consists of five officers and myself. Within the traffic safety unit, our officers are responsible for responding to public-generated traffic safety complaints. We review all traffic-related issues, collision reports, as well we monitor traffic issues in nine zones within our city. We also respond to all motor vehicle collisions involving serious bodily harm and death. Our traffic safety officers are trained in commercial motor vehicle enforcement, drug recognition, which is impaired driving by drug, and conduct traffic collision investigations training for all of our frontline collision investigators, all patrol. We are trained Level Four Collision Reconstructionists, which we are required at any collision where there is serious bodily harm or death. This role enables our traffic officers to recreate a collision scene based on evidence such as skid marks, yaw marks and a variety of physical evidence which is left at a collision scene. Without going into detail on each area of expertise of my officers, I would like to discuss a key program we run called a selective traffic enforcement program, or as we refer to as STEP, within the traffic unit. Our STEP program was developed to strategically target traffic violations that have a high degree of probability to cause serious injury, bodily harm and death. This initiative has been developed by collaborating with my team of officers within their areas of expertise, which is in fact, traffic safety. Our STEP program coincides with our Kingston Police Business Case, which also sought input from the public regarding community safety issues, of which traffic safety is the number one public concern. My officers in the traffic safety unit have broken down a selective enforcement initiative for each month of the year, which goes from January to December. The traffic officers have identified what we refer to as the big four. These are traffic violations that hold a high degree of probability to cause serious injury or death in motor vehicle collisions. The big four are, as we refer to them, speeding, impaired driving, distracted driving, red lights, failing to stop. The goals of our STEP program are to reduce collisions, to reduce injuries to the public, to reduce property damage and to increase traffic safety and awareness through education. The Kingston Police employ a crime analyst who is able to use collected data from our collision reporting center to identify these hotspots within the city. We are able to identify and target enforced locations in the city to deter poor driving and increase traffic safety and awareness. The locations identified show data that includes areas where collisions have occurred, causing injury, property damage. These locations include intersections with a high frequency for collision. There is a correlation between our collision reporting center, our CRC, top intersections and the intersections that have been identified in your red light camera business case study. We simply use data that is drawn from collisions reported to the police and it is currently updated quarterly. Intersections where collisions have occurred identify a number of incidents reported, injuries, percentages of injuries and property damage estimates. These locations are enforced as part of our traffic officers' duties. The data that is also shared, it's shared with Patrol Division through a data board and which is also updated monthly for patrol officers. With limited officers, we are not able to enforce every intersection each hour of every day. When an officer is at a location, the effect is a deterrent to traffic violators. Clearly, when officers are not present at a location, there is no deterrent and consequence is left to chance. A red light camera can be installed and will run at intersections deemed to have a high degree of probability of red light violations. Education through signage, media publication will offer fair warning to the public where the red light cameras are present. The deterrent would be in place constantly with fixed red light cameras. The goals of the red light camera system would be the exact same as that of our Kingston Police STEP program, which is to reduce collisions, to reduce injuries to the public, to reduce property damage, to increase traffic safety through education, well-publicized location and signage. Red light running is an extremely hazardous practice. It potentially involves merging two vehicles into close proximity with velocity. Excuse me. Impacts that occur in this type of scenario are referred to as collision reconstructionists as side impact collisions. A vehicle involved in a side impact collision has no crush zone to speak of. This means that one vehicle will merge into the occupant compartment with tragic results. Energy transferred into the occupant compartment is very high, with a high degree of probability resulting in serious bodily harm and/or death. I will reiterate, running a red light is illegal under the Highway Traffic Act, as well as potentially fatal. An event that occurred last week while I was on patrol with one of my officers, we were partnered up and we were conducting traffic enforcement patrol. We stopped at a red light on Sir John A. Counter Boulevard at Sir John A. Our light turned red, we stopped successfully. A small compact vehicle passed us on the left in the left turn onto Sir John A. Boulevard and almost causing a collision. We activated our emergency lights, we proceeded when it was safe to do so, when all traffic that we could see was stopped. We proceeded after the vehicle, stopped it and issued a PON, provincial offense notice, for failing to stop at the red light. As a first responder, I have witnessed the results of highway fatalities, including intersection fatalities. The impact on families, survivors as well as first responders is always devastating, no matter who was at fault. You carry the memory of the victim and the victims with you long after the scene is clear. Many intersections do not offer ideal locations for red light enforcement for officers. To actually catch a violator, you must, sorry, correction. To actually catch someone who has violated a red light, an officer may have to enter into that intersection with emergency lights activated. To stop traffic, cause a hazard in order to pursue a violator, you must weigh the odds. This places members of the public at risk as well as the officers themselves. When the public sees emergency lights activated, many stop suddenly, which may also cause a collision. When officers lay red light tags. When officers lay red light charges, a member of the public decides to take the case to When officers lay red light charges and a member of the public decides to take the case to trial, it takes an officer off the road to defend the charge, and it is the officer's evidence versus the violator's word. With red light cameras, the evidence is clear. A picture, as they say, paints a thousand words. It reduces officers' court time, keeping officers on the road to continue enforce traffic safety where they are needed.
One minute.
A consistent deterrent of red light cameras at selected locations will provide consistent electronic enforcement, and over time will alter red light running at these locations. As your Kingston Police Traffic Safety Sergeant, representing the Traffic Safety Unit in the Kingston Police, we support red light camera project. We do not have the resources on a consistent basis to staff these locations long enough to deter practices of red light running. Our goals, the Kingston Police and that of City Council, are the same. Ultimately, we all share the responsibility to make our roads safer, and to keep our families out of harm's way, and enforced through education and traffic safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else, Chief? So at this point, we will open up the floor to questions. Counselor Holland, and then Counselor Neal.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for the briefing. There was a mention of the public-generated traffic complaints, and how that, I guess I'm trying to just get some idea of what that process entails. It's making me curious about the extent to whether the public are actually providing input on what's happening at intersections. Is that something that takes place where there are calls? And if a member of the public calls to report an incident that's not related to an accident, is there a process involved in following up with that?
Yes, absolutely. What we have, you can online report any traffic concern, violation. So we actually break it down to a community complaint. If there's a consistent amount of complaints at a location over a period of time, we will generate an occurrence. We'll put it on what we, within the traffic unit, we have, again, I mentioned, the city's broken down into nine zones. So we'll put that occurrence in that zone, and it will be assigned to an officer to clear after 30 days, and the entire traffic unit will have that location to go to enforce it. So there will be repeated enforcement at that location. That's a community complaint. A traffic complaint is a specific complaint of, I saw a driver, A, B, C, D, 1, 2, 3, go through the intersection at Main and Fifth. We'll follow that up with an investigation, again, speak to the witness, and if there's enough evidence, then proceed with the charge if there's in fact enough evidence. So there are two different complaints, one's traffic, one's community, which we enforce both within the traffic unit. Can I answer your question?
Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. A couple of questions for the chief. I guess a lot of us have been given pause by the cost of the proposed program, $520,000. And I know it's intended to be revenue neutral, or to bring in indeed more than that in fines. I guess my question has to do with $520,000. If my math is correct, would that equal four, between four and five, first-class constables' salary and benefits?
That's correct. That'd be approximately five officers. Matter of fact, with that money, I'd be able to certainly double my traffic unit. I have right now five constables, and Sergeant Keel dedicated solely to traffic. That's their main area of responsibility unless they're redeployed elsewhere.
Yeah, and I'll hearken back to the 90s when we had, when Norm Jackson was our city solicitor, and we used to get reports requesting the hiring of four more bylaw officers, which cost $45,000, but they would generate on average $70-some thousand in revenue fines. Would a dedicated traffic officer generate fines that would be equal or greater than if he was totally dedicated, or dedicated to traffic? Would he generate as much as he's being paid or more?
Difficult question to answer. The purpose of an officer assigned to traffic is about road safety. It's about education. It's about working with our city partners, about making the city safe. It's not about, I don't ask for quotas, we don't push for quotas. It's simply about enforcement in general. So what you're asking is very difficult.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And it's just, there's so much complexity to unsafe driving. And the red light camera program addresses one aspect of that. A patrol officer in a vehicle, I would assume, can address a much wider range of potential violations.
Absolutely. To me, both would work hand in hand. Police officers would be available to enforce Highway Traffic Act in general. Red light program is about enforcing the violation of people running red lights. If you ever have an opportunity, Google it, go to YouTube, and it clearly shows you some of the websites, how a vehicle goes through a red light, you see it clearly, and the vehicle speeding through, and then the impact of side impact collision, or T-bone, as it's often referred to, it's pretty dramatic, it's pretty violent, and that's what it's about. It's about, didn't particularly stop that collision, but it's about making people accountable for their actions.
And as I understand it, traffic patrol officers may be assigned to traffic, but if there's a call in their immediate vicinity, they will react. In other words, they're totally cross-trained, they aren't just doing traffic. Is that accurate?
That's right. General patrol officers are assigned to respond to calls for service. Most of the time, they're busy going from call to call, or dealing with arrests or individuals that they've detained under the Mental Health Act, and they're busy at the hospital dealing with those individuals. Last year, I increased my officers in the traffic section because I felt it was important to, because it's the number-one complaint here in Kingston, traffic safety, to have officers dedicated solely to traffic enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turner, Deputy Mayor Turner.
Thank you. I have a question for you. In terms of extending the yellow lights and extending the duration of the red lights, do you think that would have any impact in making the intersection safer?
I think it's a question that should be asked really to traffic engineers, to your city staff. The danger for me is if you're extending the amber light, you're, the amber light is supposed to be a transition light, where you're going from one to the other. It's meant to stop, it's meant to stop safely if you can do so. To extend it will only, in my mind, give an opportunity to motorists to try and again burn that light. But again, that question is very particular, very specific, and I think it needs to be addressed with somebody from the city.
Thank you.
Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. So I just want to ask if I'm correct, if we basically didn't go ahead with this program, we would have enough money to put approximately five more officers on the road, who would then have the training and versatility to not just be a presence to help reduce kind of infractions in traffic, but also available for any other issues throughout the city?
That's correct.
So essentially, increasing our overall police resource and presence throughout the city for, by five officers for the same cost as this program, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, I welcome this discussion because, as we all know, presenting the budget of a year, it's about maintaining it at a proper level for taxpayers, and this would be an opportunity to increase the traffic section by four or five officers, absolutely dedicated to traffic, road safety, and...
Which, in your opinion, would that have at least the same effect as the, I know this is hypothetical, but would it have a good effect on traffic safety overall, and kind of getting, actually ticketing with demerit points aggressive drivers, rather than just having a fine sent to the registered owner of the vehicle?
It would be, to me, ideally, it'd be great to have both, red light camera and an increase in traffic officers, and I'll tell you, I'll take whatever City Council proposes, because it comes down to, it's about road safety.
Right. Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, to the chief. In a couple of the presentations before, we had two suggestions that sort of stand out for me. One is, is that red light cameras actually are increase a danger, they increase overall collision rates? And I'm wondering what the police perspective is on that increase of collision rates that's suggested by the data provided by the previous presenters.
I think in the beginning, it's about an awareness, and it's about an education. I think people, when they approach an intersection and they view an amber light, and they know there's a red light camera there, some may panic, some may not stop safely, and that, from what I understand, may occur initially. But it does, you can't take one piece of the report, and most reports, or the reports I know out there, indicate that the red light camera program is a safe program that ultimately is to make drivers who run red lights accountable.
Okay, thank you. And we also were shown a couple examples of intersections that had less regulation, less devices to control things, to allow for drivers to become maybe more attentive to other drivers and other road users in terms of how they approach the intersection. From a policing perspective, how does that fit with your approach? Is that something that we should be considering from a policy perspective? Would that make your life easier or more difficult to enforce if there were related traffic issues associated with that?
I found that interesting. I think we're making a couple of assumptions based on that, that all drivers have the same knowledge, skill, and ability at that intersection, and all drivers will act accordingly and be courteous. Again, I stated, I've been on the road 28 years. I would like to say a high percentage of the people at that intersection would become frustrated and not obliged. So I think that would work in a perfect world. However, driving the roads, it's not a perfect world. Take intersections away, put four-way stops. From what I've seen patrolling the roads, you will get a percentage of drivers stopping at a four-way stop, for example, when the traffic lights are failing. You'll get a percentage of people feeling that the roadway that is the more traveled roadway has the right of way and plow right through the intersection. So I disagree with that statement.
Thank you, Counselor Sinek.
Thank you, Your Worship. Two questions. The first one is for Sergeant Keel, and it's because you've been out there for so long, seeing everything. So besides the red light cameras, in your opinion, how can the city make our dangerous intersections safer, besides implementing the red light cameras? Or are the red light cameras the end-all and be-all?
No, I think we've touched on a couple of points already. They are not the end-all, be-all. Added officer enforcement, having the ability to, again, I stated, I have five officers, but the study looked at 10 intersections. Our Collision Reporting Center, for example, gives us a quarterly evaluation of a lot more than 10 intersections, with a multitude of which, the intersections that was looked at are in our Collision Reporting Center. However, there are a lot more. So we just don't have the resources to sit and do collective enforcement. And as I said, when you're in a police car, a marked car, you just, it's a billboard, so people will see that. However, we're not able to place a billboard in or a police car at every intersection all the time. So like I stated, an electronic deterrent through proper education, well-publicized locations will offer that deterrent. And again, it's fair warning to the public, as I stated. I think that with a good education program, highly-publicized locations, we're not about stealth here, we're about actually letting the public know that those cameras are there for a reason, to reduce the collisions at those locations, side impacts predominantly, that highly-educated or highly-publicized locations are the way to go. But again, increasing officers, other traffic comming measures, collected with the city engineering, for example, again, it's not a one-stop, one solution. So you have to have a variety of solutions. That'd be one of them.
Thank you. And the second question goes to our police chief. And so for the seven municipalities that are going forward, you know, with a renewed RFP contract for the red light cameras, York Region, Hamilton Region, London, which is new and joining, Ottawa that you've mentioned, Toronto, Halton, like, they're all gigantic municipalities compared to Kingston. So I'm sure as you go to, you know, different police conferences, you, you know, you talk to some of the police chiefs from our comparator cities, so Guelph, and Barry, and St. Catherine's, and those cities haven't gone forward with red light cameras. So do you know why the cities that are more Kingston-sized have not gone forward with red light cameras?
No, I don't have that information. Mostly, red light camera programs are led by the city, so it's not something that's generated by the police. But all I can tell you is, from my contacts with the services that oversee those cities, there's no complaints regarding red light camera programs, none whatsoever. I know from a colleague who oversees, I know we went from Guelph to Waterloo, so he's out there now claiming that they should be introducing a red light camera program. I read that in the paper a couple of weeks ago. So it's something that is out there, it may be related to a cost, I'm not really sure, but all I can tell you, it's seen as a positive piece out there.
Thank you. Counselor Strout.
Thank you, Your Worship. This question is for Sergeant Keel. Like you, Sergeant, I am familiar with the horror stories that happen after collisions, where I've worked in an emergency and intensive care unit as a nurse. Again, thank you for coming today and giving us your point of view. I really appreciate the frontline point of view on this. I guess I won't repeat the themes that we've seen from my colleagues, but I am curious what you might think about something else that's on tonight's agenda. Under new motions, there's a request to ask staff to come back with a strategic road safety program, take them almost a year to complete, which would involve analysis of the data that we have, and come back with recommendations on how to improve safety in general, and have a, you know, strategic plan for that. And I'm just wondering what you thought of that concept, of that study by city staff.
As a road officer, I support anything, any proposal that certainly would enhance road safety. Again, it would take time. Everything takes time, takes an education program. It's a collaboration between all the stakeholders, the police being one of them, just one of those stakeholders. I've seen similar plans, and absolutely, it's a collaboration across the board with all stakeholders with input for a collective safety plan, so I certainly would support that.
Thank you, and thank you, Chief, for coming and explaining the police perspective on current enforcement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. My question is, from a police perspective, how do the injuries received from side or T-bone collisions compare to injuries received from rear-end collisions?
Sure. Good point. A rear-end collision, again, there are a lot of variables when you're recreating a scene or a collision. Again, we don't call them accidents, we call them collisions. Rear-end collisions, for example, would involve larger crush zones. The driver of the rear vehicle driving into the back of a forward vehicle, crush zone would be the engine compartment. And again, depending on velocity, the crush zone may actually absorb the destruction of the vehicle, or if the velocity is excessive, it may not. It all depends on velocity. But there is a crush zone between a driver hitting the back end of a vehicle in front of him. If you're in the vehicle in front that gets hit from the rear, again, you have the volume of vehicle behind you as a driver between you and the front end of the vehicle that's approaching you. It may be, it all depends, there's a lot of variables, but based on velocity, consistent with the size of the vehicle, et cetera, there still is a crush zone. Even with the best vehicles that are out there, your Audis, your BMWs, et cetera, with side impact curtains, your crush zone still is very minimal when you're talking velocities, and you're... And you're talking about placing a vehicle impacting a side impact, a side impact collision with virtually no crush zone except for the airbag that's going to absorb that. Depending on velocity, there's, there's really, the crush zone's negligible. So a rear, if you're asking me which is a better collision to be involved in, I would suggest, depending on velocity, a rear-end collision, based on crush zones.
And in your experience, are the injuries tend to be worse from a T-bone collision?
Potentially fatal.
Potentially fatal?
Absolutely. And I've seen that, yes.
Okay, rather than a rear-end collision?
Again, depending on velocities, but crush zones being greater in a rear-end collision, the injuries from a side impact collision direct is, are much more devastating than a rear-end collision. Absolutely, from a collision respect. And I have my senior collision reconstructionist here. You concur with that, Greg?
One last question, which I think there's some confusion. If you look at the emails and that about yellow lights. What I got from what the chief, I believe it was the chief that said this, is that if you see a yellow light, you should be drawing to a stop. It's illegal to go through on a yellow.
Correct, sir.
Okay. And the red light cameras only measure cars that go past the stop point when it's already red?
Correct.
Correct.
As I understand it, yes.
So the yellow amount doesn't really come into the matter?
No, it's for a specific red light infraction.
It's all about the red light?
Correction.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you very much for this, this evening. There was a comment the chief made that I'd like to see if you could expand on for us, especially as we're talking about, even thinking of hiring more officers. When you talked about, if someone is turning left illegally and a police car sees it, it can create just as many problems trying to chase that person because they're, they're committing an illegal act on a red light and then you have to go through it as well. Could you expand on that, how difficult that is?
It's Sergeant Keel who had that experience, but we've all lived it. It's, it's when you see an infraction at an intersection and, you know, you see it clearly before the police officer pursues that vehicle, knowing full well that there's an infraction there, he needs to ensure that he can proceed safely. And often, the intersection is congested with traffic. And when he's moving into that intersection, he or she needs to ensure as well that there's no pedestrian in the area. So when you're, you're actually crawling through that intersection with lights and sirens, and believe it or not, not everybody gives you that right of way. And once you go through, it's often futile as the, that vehicle is long gone. Or you have to weigh that decision, is it worth jeopardizing other vehicles or other drivers on the road trying to get that vehicle?
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you, Chief. Sergeant Cool for that briefing. Okay, so moving on, are there any petitions to present tonight? Councillor Stroud.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I rise to present a petition from a constituent, Mr. Galen Watts, to place an off-leash dog park, sorry, to place an off-leash dog area in City Park. There's approximately 150 signatures and I'd like to present it now. The full petition will be at the clerk's office.
Okay, seeing no other petitions. We do have a couple of motions of congratulations. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to John McDonald, QECVI student, on receiving the Horatio Alger Canadian Scholarship. This scholarship is presented annually to 85 Canadian high school students who have overcome significant adversity while demonstrating strength of character, strong academics and a desire to contribute to society. Congratulations, John, for this great recognition. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to George Muirhead, who will be celebrating his 100th birthday on May 8, 2016. Mr. Muirhead was Kingston's heritage planner in the 1950s and 1960s, followed by 18 years as the director of planning and urban renewal. During his years with the city, he was instrumental in promoting the restoration of City Hall, the creation of the city's first architectural inventory, the establishment of the Frontenac Heritage Foundation Society, spearheaded the revitalization of our downtown involving the restoration of several prominent 19th century commercial buildings, and influenced the creation of the Ontario Heritage Act of 1975. Mr. Muirhead is a pioneer in heritage conservation and continues to inspire municipal and provincial governments, heritage organizations, businesses and citizens to recognize and appreciate historic buildings. We do also have a motion of recognition this evening. Moved by Councillor Allen, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that the thanks and appreciation of Kingston City Council be extended to Tommy Valier for his commitment to civic engagement demonstrated through countless hours of live tweeting and streaming of council and committee meetings. Tommy's unbiased reporting through the creation of the YGKC hashtag engaged community members from across the city in the discussion and decisions in a new way and created an accessible forum for discussion on municipal affairs. Thank you, Tommy, and best of luck in your next engagement endeavor. And I hope that, I'm going to watch your Twitter feed and I hope that you're tweeting about this right now. Thanks, Tom. So with that, we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, on to reports. Report number 46 from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor George, seconded by Councillor Holland, that report number 46, run on the Chief of Ministry of Officer Consent, be received and adopted.
So there are items A through G. I will note that we will need to separate C because we need a couple of councillors to volunteer for that. Are there any other items that we would like to separate? Councillor Stroud.
E, please.
I'm sorry, E? Okay. Councillor Shell?
F.
F? Okay, so seeing no other separations, we will vote first on the remaining items. We have item A, which is a proposal for the purchase, remediation and redevelopment of Brownfield failed tax sale property, former I. Cohen and Sons Properties and authority to permanently close and declare surplus and dispose of a portion of Fraser Street and a portion of Duff Street. Item B, terms of reference Arts Advisory Committee working groups. Item D, a word of contract for supply and delivery of healthy food and beverage vending services for various facilities. Item G, North Kingston Secondary Plan Appointment of Community Working Group. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Item C, service level agreement with the Kingston Arts Council and council participation in the 2016 City of Kingston Arts Fund. So I'll just note that there is opportunity for two councillors to be appointed to the jury review committees. Do I have any volunteers? Councillor Neil, thank you. Can I have another volunteer, please? Councillor Stroud, thank you very much. Are there any, anybody else that wishes to run for these positions? Seeing none. So we will pass then item C, noting that will be Councillor Neil and Councillor Stroud. Okay, so we will call the vote on item C. And that carries. Item E, Cultural Heritage Property Evaluation and Conservation Project Proposed Listing on Heritage Properties Register. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. So as you know, I chaired the committee, the Heritage Kingston Committee, and it has a working group called the Historic Properties Working Group, which does great work. It's, in my opinion, the most productive working group that I know of in the city that I've been in contact with. I can't speak for the ones that haven't been. And, and anyway, it was involved in the work of this item that's up today at the working group level. And the way that that integrates into the committee's work is they present their briefing notes as a summary of the work they've done each month in sort of a one-page summary, because a working group does not have official minutes or anything like that. And then, in this case, this item came to the committee as an information report at our last meeting. And, and of course, predictably, everybody was excited about adding listed properties to the list, you know, to the heritage list to keep track of the important heritage properties in Kingston. But my question, I guess, is just for clarification for those who pay attention to heritage matters, because I've had a few questions about this from the community. And I know staff did a lot of work on this, we also hired a consultant. So my question is, if could staff could just explain to those watching how individual Heritage Kingston committee members are able to give meaningful input on files such as this one, when the only time these items appear on the agenda is in the form of first a briefing note from the working group and then later an information report from staff, but never as a business item, as was the case with this item?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So as Councillor Stroud indicated, there is a significant amount of work that was done by the working group. And there are a number of members of the committee that do attend the working group meetings and are heavily involved in terms of reviewing the actual work that was being produced by the consultants. And were involved also in some of the final wording that was identified in the heritage significance for each of these properties. So there is, there's a lot of work from all the members that were involved at the working group level. In terms of that information then translating back to the committee, there was a briefing that was provided by staff and we welcome obviously any questions or comments from members of the committee. And again, an information report that provided more detailed information to the committee and to have a dialogue with committee members. So there has been quite a lot of involvement from committee and working group members.
Yeah, so just to wrap it up, I thank the Commissioner for that answer and I can attest that at the last meeting of Heritage Kingston, there was input from committee members. And I'm happy to hear the staff is taking note of that and incorporating it in their work going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Allen.
Thank you. And just, just very quickly, I had a brief call with our chief planning official earlier today just to check in to make sure that these designations had been communicated to the property owners before we engaged in this. And they have been, so we haven't heard anything back. And, and I was worried because I had, there's so many rural properties on here. And it's really nice, actually, to see the rural area of Kingston get the same recognition that we've often contributed or attributed to other parts of the city. And it's going to really benefit those, some of those property owners to have their properties on this list. So I'm excited to see this go forward and to work on behalf of my citizens in terms of the next steps in terms of this. So great to have the rural area on the heritage list. Thanks.
Okay, so we will call the vote on item E. And that carries. Item F, Queen's Request for Extension to Temporary Noise Exemption, West Campus Sports Field and Richardson Stadium. Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm happy to support this request. We did have a councillor connect last month with the Portsmouth District Association, inviting anyone from the district to come to speak about complaints, praise, whichever. And there were no comments about Queen's. The communication that Queen's is doing now, I find remarkable. They are reaching out regularly to the area's citizens to say, are there any problems? And I certainly haven't heard any. And the Portsmouth District Association will be in touch with Mr. Fraser to get regular updates about the stadium. I'm pleased about the public meetings. I think four years ago compared to what went on to today is absolutely night and day. And I hadn't quite realized how much high school and elementary students used the fields. I hadn't really understood that balance that has to be kept by Queen's. But that is the community portion of the field use. And I'm absolutely happy to support this noise extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neil.
Thank you. If I could request, perhaps, a Kingston Communications Group, if, when we get the time, date and place for the public meeting that's being proposed, perhaps we could communicate that on city social media as well as the Queen's social media. And in particular, if Queen's could contact the three neighborhood associations that border that area, which would be Portsmouth, Sydenham District and Williamsville, just so that the community associations would be aware of that meeting as well? That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Turner.
Thank you, and through you. I'd just like to reiterate what Councillor Shell just said is, I'm very impressed with how Queen's is giving back to the community and what they've done and how they've improved the stadium and how they've addressed all the two complaints, there's only been two complaints, and the hotline. And I think those are great, great endeavors moving forward into the future. And I just, I'm so impressed with Queen's and what they give back to the community and I can't thank you enough. I'm voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud.
Thanks, Worship. So this one is tough for me because as representing Sydenham District, as you recall, last year when the very similar exemption was requested, we had delegations at that time from local residents. And the ones that are in my district that I heard from then, I heard from again this year. And they're telling me that they essentially do not feel satisfied with where the file is at at this point in time. And that forces me to represent their view again now. So I'm standing up to do that. Basically, there is a, there is a place where we could all agree is fair for noise coming from sports facilities. And because we're having, the city staff is going to come back with an updated bylaw, I believe that will go a long way to solving the problem. Until that time, essentially, my position has to remain as it did a year ago, which is, the only way to protect my residents on Oakridge is by withholding my support for this exemption. And I'd just like to say that the personal, personally, the problem area is in the 93 occurrences. The 93 athletic events in that north field. It isn't Richardson Stadium, no one's trying to shut down the football team or anything like that. This is the north field, which gets rented out to community groups for profit for Queen's. That is the area that I get a lot of the complaints about. And that is the point, that hasn't changed, it's still 93 occurrences that are being requested. So for that reason, I'm going to have to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Report number 47 from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor Allen, seconded by Councillor Stroud. That report number 47 from the Chief of Ministry of Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So there are three items in this report. Number one is agreements required for red light camera program. Who would like to start us off this evening? Councillor Shell.
Certainly. Thank you very much. As I said to one of the, responded to one of the emails that I got, the saddest part about this whole debate is we are, we've been discussing which is the worst accident? Who gets hurt the most at these intersections? And to me, that just sums it up. We have a serious problem. I see it driving the streets every day. And I do carefully avoid rush hours because I don't have to be on the road in rush hours. And I certainly see the accidents after the fact. And I certainly saw one just a couple of months ago at Bath and Portsmouth. Left turn, guy coming through, coming up the hill, you can't see quite as well, and just bang. And it's, it's shocking. It happens regularly. The police, as they said, even if you had an officer right there, and an awful lot of times, they wouldn't be and an awful lot of times, they wouldn't be able to go after the person. They'd get away with it. If we had police who could sit there for 12 hours a day at major intersections, fine. But we don't have that many police. We couldn't afford it. This is a way to handle a demonstrated problem in a rather passive way. The person is going to get a ticket. They don't get a demerit point. They will be understanding that somebody driving their car is driving dangerously. And as we've been told, it does reduce the problem. It will never get rid of the problem because we have, I agree with the chief. My number one complaint is traffic as a councillor, number one. But intersection accidents are horrible. We see them. I think every one of us must have seen at least one or two in the last few years. So I'm quite content to vote for red light cameras. And as I said, I hope in five years, we decide we don't need them because the problem is so incredibly reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I have reflected on this. We had a very comprehensive report from our traffic engineers and a very good presentation by the chief that I think has a great deal of merit. And that is why at our previous meeting, before this was deferred, I quite willingly was ready to support it. I think the moral of this story is we have committed to public consultation and having public meetings before serious decisions were made. I think we forgot that commitment in this process that's before us. I, I look forward to a more comprehensive study that may indeed support the idea of a red light, red light cameras being installed. My difficulty is that, yes, it's a passive way of gaining revenue. And it may or may not be revenue neutral. But the reality is that it's very, very expensive. $520,000 of operating a year for red light cameras. We're told that they will generate that much or more to pay for the, the cost of that commitment for five years. But I, I see much more than just red light, intersection, passive ticket generation. For those people, we all have roads. And Counselor Shell is right, we get a lot of traffic issues. The speed of cars on Brock and Johnson and Union and Sir John A, there's seldom a week that goes by that I don't hear from a constituent complaining about those, those issues. Those will never be addressed by a red light camera. Those can only be addressed by a constable in a vehicle on traffic duty. And quite frankly, I was surprised to hear how few purely dedicated traffic officers we have. And I had thought that five, $520,000 might generate 3.5 more officers. We've heard that it could generate as much as five new officers dedicated on the road doing traffic. And they can address red light infractions. They can also address all of the other dangerous traffic violations that take place. I am looking forward to the, a more comprehensive traffic safety report. And if at the end of the day, one of those proposed criteria sensibly is a red light camera, I'm, after we've had public consultation with the community, I'd be totally in support of that. The problem with this is we had two, a very, very comprehensive, very detailed report from our senior traffic staff. We had an excellent presentation from the chief. But the majority of people that have responded negatively to this proposal, I'm not sure that they have all of that, all of that information. Or they've been made, or they've been given all of that information. I know it's available publicly.
30 seconds.
Thank you. But I'm not sure that everybody who has said, and we received lots of emails, some of them form emails, but some of them genuine individual concerns. I think we need more public consultation before we adopt this. I think we need to put more officers in vehicles to do traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you, I have a question for staff. During the conversations by email and over the past couple of weeks, some, and something that we didn't have a chance to talk about during the presentations, was the concept of speed cameras rather than red light cameras. I'm wondering if staff could enlighten us to the difference between these two technologies and how they're used to curb aggressive driving?
Ms. Green.
Through you, Your Worship. Speed cameras are a very effective tool to enforce speeding infractions. But unfortunately, at this time, we are not permitted to use that technology within the province of Ontario. There are discussions with the Ministry of Transportation that at some point in the future municipalities would be able to operate their own speed camera systems. But at this time, we are not able to do so.
Thank you. This, I, this, I can understand what, the feeling that we need to check in and have a more comprehensive approach. I, I think that the presentation from our Chief of Police and the Traffic Sergeant spoke to the need for a comprehensive approach, multiple techniques, both design, enforcement and education. And one of the presentations asked for a large public awareness campaign, which in the report that we have before us, has a significant strategy already laid out in place over the next nine months. We are going to engage our community on this issue. We are going to educate them because I think we would prefer our community not to get dinged with these tickets. We would prefer even more so though, that nobody gets hit and hurt or dies. And as the presentation from Police Chief and the Traffic Sergeant said, they can't be everywhere. Even if we added five more sergeants, they are not able to be there at every intersection on a regular basis. Some intersections are very difficult for enforcement by humans, I guess. And the other thing is, we're talking about this comprehensive strategy. We have a motion coming up later from Counselors Bohm and Counselor Stroud. But by the time we get that information a year from now, by the time we get to implementing that information, we're going to be halfway through the red light program. So we'll know if it's working or not, or whether or not it's a comprehensive thing. But we should be operating in the name of safety as immediately and as urgently as we can. We want to increase safety in our city. And this is just one tool, and we should be adding it to our toolbox as soon as possible. I just don't understand why we would want to delay safety at the cost of putting officers or public at risk, at the potential of increasing our costs without having a better, more systematic approach. I agree, we should have as many approaches to traffic safety. This is my number one complaint as well. And I am all for making our roads safer, and I think this is the way to go forward. And I think it's one way. We're not going to rely on it. It's not going to solve all our problems. But it's going to solve some of them. And I think that's why we should vote for this.
Thank you. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm not sure if people remember this. Last year, I guess it was April Fool's Day, there was one of the typical media pranks. And I was involved in it. And it had to do with having residents of the City of Kingston take photos of people texting while driving and send them in to the city or the police and, for a reward, so a sort of ticketing system. So I was actually on the line taking calls from the public on this. And it was, this sounds like it's, it's not serious, but it really is, I think it's relevant. It was overwhelming, the number of people who were against this initiative, this initiative, on the basis that they felt it was draconian. And that's all they were concerned with. They weren't concerned with the public safety element, which I think you could argue that texting while driving causes a great deal of hazards on the road as well. So this is just making me realize that some of the arguments made this evening about more public consultation are really important because we need to, we've gotten a lot of input from the public already. But we do need to test, I think, the public appetite for this level of surveillance. And we certainly need to start to do some more study and put some more thought into an initiative that really is about surveillance. And it's surveillance because it's expedient. And it's surveillance because, based on the arguments that we've heard tonight, it seems to have more to do with efficiency than efficacy. I don't find that the report is compelling in making the case that public safety would be enhanced to the extent that we would like to see it by this one initiative. So of course, I support all the other ideas put forward about a more comprehensive strategy. And essentially, I'm just, I just really want us to take this, this new level of surveillance very seriously and consider the precedent that we might be setting with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you. So one of the positives I see coming out of this is a greater discussion about safety and essentially what that's going to look like. So as was previously mentioned, there is a motion coming up at council at the end to address that. Let's level, have a holistic approach. Yes, this may be a tool, but it could be the wrong tool. So we don't really want to jump the gun on something like that and just implement something that we're committing to for five years at a cost of $520,000 a year, or alternatively, an additional five police officers, which have versatility to answer different types of calls, not just traffic. And I would actually contend that it's a little bit better and more positive reinforcement to have a City of Kingston police officer sitting at an intersection. People see them, they're visible, they slow down, they also feel safer, rather than making drivers nervous, making them worried about a camera that may or may not go off and having them not really understand what's going on if they're visitors to the city. Weather is a factor. There's a lot of different issues there. So we're also talking about a technology from 1969, which was when the first one was put in in Israel. So I would kind of contend that if they were great and that effective and their business case was that sound, and they could change people's behaviors in aggressive driving and stop people from running red lights, they already would have eliminated themselves. And we actually would not be having this debate today because they would have been so effective, they would cease to exist. So I'm essentially going to admit something now about red light cameras, and that's that they're a proven technology. They're proven to make drivers nervous and unsure. They're proven to actually increase the number of accidents at intersections, which we've heard numerous times tonight. They're proven to not be infallible. Judges all over the place are throwing out tickets because they can't identify either who the driver is, or they can't, the license plate has been covered. So ultimately, with a covered license plate, an officer still would have been able to go after that vehicle and actually charge the driver, not the person who owns the vehicle. So you're actually getting the person who committed the crime. They're also proven to not remove aggressive drivers from the road because it's just a fine. Well, $325 to one person is a lot of money. To another person that maybe is an aggressive driver, it's a drop in the bucket. So you're not really changing a behavior with a person because the fine is not based on their wage or their income level. Also with that, it's proven to approach the law as you're guilty until you can come to court three, four times, or however many it takes, to prove your innocence. So with that in mind, I won't be supporting this. And that's because a lot of places that went this route and installed these cameras are since removing them, are in the process of removing them. And they're going back to engineered solutions, delayed red lights at all intersections or longer ambers, and taking a holistic approach, not just one tool out of the toolbox. They're trying to bring the whole toolbox into play here. So with that, I hope that this, basically, it doesn't pass so that we can take the true holistic approach that this safety initiative truly requires. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turn.
Thank you. And through you. This is a tough, tough one tonight. It's about public safety and about cost and about a lot of things. But I think we need to look at it in a holistic approach, as Counselor Bohm stated. And I think that if we take our time and we look at it properly, it's going to cost us a lot of money. That's one thing. And I think there might be other solutions that we can look at, like a four-way red for a longer time. Maybe, I know the police don't particularly like the longer amber, but maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe we need to consider that. Be a lot less expensive to put a four-way red in. There's other options. And I really don't think that at this stage in the game, we should be locking ourselves into a five-year plan and spending that much money. I think we need an education campaign. I think that would be helpful. And I think we need to look at other options. So tonight, I am going to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud.
Thanks, Your Worship. Like I said last, two weeks ago, this has turned out to be quite the interesting little issue for us. And I'd like to thank all my colleagues for being so thoughtful and respectful, doing your homework, talking to your constituents, reading the emails, doing your research. It's great. We've had several delegations as well, a great briefing from police. I mean, no matter what, we've all learned a lot more about the red light through this process. That's a positive. I'm just going to restrict my comments to two aspects that haven't been mentioned yet. The financial case, just very simply, there's one aspect of the financial case. So it's actually, works out really well with the math. 52,000, 10 cameras, 52,000 each, 520,000. 52,000 is also 260 times 200. 260 is the amount of, is the dollars you get back from Toronto after we send them, after the ticket comes to them, 325. So they get a ticket from the owner of the vehicle for 325, send back 260. So it takes 200 tickets per camera or 2,000 tickets in Kingston. 2,000 tickets in Kingston. The first 2,000 tickets pay for the program. Great. Except that, that doesn't make it free. That's 2,000 tickets, that's, that's $520,000 out of our local economy. Because that money doesn't go to restaurants, to K-Rock Center, to landscaping, to anything else. It goes to pay these tickets, to pay for the cameras, the cameras that weren't here before. So that's actually a net loss of $520,000 a year, or 2.5 million over five years. That's a certainty. That's a certain loss, economic loss to the community. And I have heard positive feedback from my, my letter to the editor that questioned the validity of this program based on that, that fact alone from, from small business owners in downtown Kingston. So that shows to me that they are also conscious of this idea of the money leaving the economy. Because the problem is, this is not a maiden Kingston solution. This is a province-wide program that we're buying in on. And so we're sending off, we're taking that first 2,000 tickets, that money, that 520,000 per year, and we're just taking it right out of our economy and we're, we're sending it over to Toronto. And then we might get the, the next few tickets after that in excess, in surplus. And there's even talk in the report of putting that towards a dedicated bylaw officer who does traffic. So on the city side. Well, if that's in the report, then the engineers and staff that have written the report are thinking about a likely outcome, a likely outcome that it'd actually make a surplus. Thus, the predictable backlash from the community members that are saying this is a cash grab. a cash grab. And just finally, I'd like to say, the pure numbers of what I have received in correspondence and in personal conversations and all that, similar to what happened in the schools issue, it was over 100 people saying they didn't like the idea, and only five in favor of the idea, of the people that contacted me. That's a very different, that's 19 to one, that's, you know, that's 95% against. That's what the community is saying. Granted, they probably haven't done the full analysis that our staff have done, but if, you know, they're saying that, and that speaks to what Counsel Neal was saying about the public process. So I think that, at this point in time, if you're thinking of voting against this, you're doing the right thing. And don't forget that we can also revisit it when we get the, when we get the next step in the process, whatever that may be. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ossenick.
Thank you, your worship. I don't want to repeat too much from two weeks ago, but I have read the 2014 business case, and there were a few things inside the business case that were questionable. One of it says that, in a number of the intersections studied, the approach, north, south, east, west, experiencing the highest number of red light running, was not the same approach at that specific intersection that had the highest number of collisions. Whereas, we've been led all along to believe it's the red light running that's causing the collisions. And there is a line in this business case that says, for all those intersections, not for all the intersections, is that true? One approach has high red light running, another approach has the high number of collisions. So how do we know for sure that putting a red light camera at which of those two intersections will result in the lowest number of collisions with that? There's another point in the business case that says, even one location, sorry, it is unlikely that even one location can be found in Kingston that would justify a red light camera based solely on the number of collisions. And that's where it then talks about the halo effect, the spillover effect, even though it says usually that takes a couple of years in Hamilton, that's what they experienced of having the red light camera, before it kind of goes to all the other intersections. But like, for my own driving, ever since we've been talking about the red light cameras, I've been very conscious going through the intersections, and maybe other residents have. And it goes back to public education, the more we start talking about it, it's in the media right now, a lot, you know, we're making drivers more aware and giving them, you know, a driver's, you know, young education, driver's ed, you know, like recap of, you know, everybody, right? Stop running to red lights, stop going through on the ambers as well. Maybe we'll see a good spillover right there, without even spending the half-million dollars for the next five years. Another point in the business case, there's the chart of the intersections, and the number of side impact collisions versus the rear-end collisions. And three of the 10, they do have a higher number of side impact collisions, but the other seven have a very much higher rate of the rear-end collisions. And we have heard that the side impact is supposed to reduce by 25%, and the rear-end collisions, though, will increase by 15%. But what Waterloo has seen is a 23% increase in rear-end collisions. So the one intersection that I use every day going to work is Bath Road and Portsmouth, only four side impacts over the last five years, but 22 rear ends. And so now, like, it could possibly increase, the rear ends could increase by 23% if we're like Waterloo, and that's an extra six collisions a year. Like, I think we're just almost putting one type of collision and replacing it with a different type of collision. I would feel a lot more confident if the rear-end collisions and the side impact collisions both went down. But my biggest deterrent for supporting red light cameras is looking at Kingston compared to the other seven municipalities that currently have red light cameras. And our comparators, like Peterborough, they've never discussed it, St. Catherine's, nope, Oshawa, Pickering, they have, they did discuss it in September 2015, but they decided not to go for it. Windsor, nope. Barry, nope. Wolf, nope. Sudbury, nope. Brantford, no. Niagara Falls, no. I just don't know if we have the traffic volumes in Kingston, in a city our size, to go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with a question for staff, because we've heard a lot about the trade-off between reducing side impact collisions but getting more rear-end collisions. My question is, is there any data that suggests, is the increase in rear-end collisions permanent, or is it temporary? Is there a period of time where it spikes when people are getting used to red light cameras, or is that increase in rear-end collisions thought to be permanent?
Your worship, we're being told that that 15% potential increase in rear-end collisions could be conservative. The research is all over the place. So for example, in the region of York, as well as in the city of Calgary, they actually saw reductions in rear-end collisions, and they saw reductions as well in the angle collisions, much higher than 25%. They were even closer to 50%. So we would not know for certain exactly what that collision experience would be if we were to install red light cameras here. But I think what we need to consider is the difference in the severity between the rear end and the T-bone-type collision. And that even, if we're looking at injuries, there's such a wide range where someone might only require a very brief hospital stay, all the way to injuries that are lifelong, even quadriplegics, in these very severe types of collisions. So that's a very big difference between the rear end and the right angle-type collision.
Thank you. So we talk a lot about this smart and livable city. And one of the aspects of a smart city is using technology to be able to provide a service in a more efficient and more effective way. So the idea of a red light camera is, and yes, I've heard that people say, well, it's the same as hiring five full-time police officers. But we heard from the chief, that's not really true on a net basis. That's the reason why all of these other communities look at technologies, because on a net basis, it's a much cheaper option. I thought it was really interesting what our police chief, who I think we should consider an expert on traffic safety, said, is that it's difficult to enforce red light infractions with a live officer, for the reason that Counsel Shell did a good job of drawing attention to that. Whereas you don't have that issue with a camera. I think when we ask our police to come and to give us their input, I think we need to take at face value what it is that they said. It was very clear that they support it, and other police forces across the province also support it. Just last week, I was in Ottawa with a group of mayors, and that's always a great opportunity to be able to bounce off ideas. And so you can imagine, I was talking about red light cameras. I'm like, tell me about your experience, what do you think? And I did have a conversation with the mayor of Waterloo. Now, I would consider Waterloo a comparative community to Kingston. And they have red light cameras, and he says, you know what, it's a program, it works great, it's very effective, everybody's happy with it. I mean, obviously, you're not happy when you get a ticket. This is, this is not something that anyone's going to jump up and down, you know, if we introduce it, because if you get a ticket, you're not going to be so excited about the program. But it works. And at the end of the day, we see the case that, on a cost basis, it makes sense, and on an efficacy basis, it seems to work as well. I'm very supportive, by the way, of this comprehensive road safety program they're going to be talking about later on. But I think it's strange that we would turn down something that our own police force is saying is a great tool, to immediately exclude that. And the fact that it is used, these red light cameras are used all over North America, all over Europe, all over the world, I think it's strange for us to suddenly say that it's not a good fit for Kingston. So I understand there are costs and benefits. I've weighed them out personally. I think that the benefits outweigh the costs. So I'm going to support this. Thank you.
I give the chair back to you. Sorry, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Next on my list is Counsel George.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to staff, my question is more procedural, given the discussion I'm hearing this evening, and the motion, new motion one that will be before us in hopefully a very short period of time. If this particular recommendation fails this evening, and new motion one passes, and staff will be given the opportunity to bring forward recommendation again in the first quarter of next year in 2017, can this option still be one of their proposed, you know, one of their recommendations? Or if we defeat it this evening, is it going to take two-thirds of us to give it reconsideration in 2017? I'm just wondering, from staff's perspective, are we now saying, if we vote against this this evening, that it's a no-go, they'd have no consideration of it in their follow-up report? Or is this a matter we should defer to allow it to be considered in their follow-up report in the first quarter of next year?
Through you, your worship, if the recommendation before council fails, for all intents and purposes, the program is dead. So at some point, to really put it to bed, we would probably have to bring an amendment forward that basically directs staff to take no further action with respect to the program, and that it not be included as part of the review for next year.
So, because I'd like to, I'd really like to have all options available to us, if we're going to support the motion by Counsel Bohm and Stroud later on. I'm going to propose a deferral on the red light camera at this point in time, until such time as a staff report is presented to, I think they had it going, to the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Committee in the first quarter of 2017. So at least the option remains available for us for consideration.
So we have a motion then...
If I have a second.
So the motion is to defer item number one until... Until Q1 of 2017 to coincide with the report now.
We haven't passed that report.
This would be conditional on this new motion passing, which makes this complex. Mr. Clerk, can I see if I'm...
Show of hands, who's going to support it? I just want to see all...
Okay, so I'll allow that, that motion to defer, if there's a second. Seconded by Counsel Neal. Okay, is there any debate with respect to time or place? Seeing none, we will call the vote on the motion to defer. And that carries by a vote of nine to four. Okay, so, moving on. Item, after all that, item two, Third Crossing Action Plan, Phase Three Financial Business Plan Update. Call the vote. Counsel Hutchison? Okay, yes, you have the floor.
I was mired in the red light, just for one second. I just wanted to ask, I was glad to see that this would involve a cost-benefit analysis of the social, economic, cost-benefit analysis. And I was wondering if the cost-benefit analysis, so you can direct this to staff, if I may, the cost-benefit analysis would include the costs of extending, if the bridge would facilitate low-density suburban development?
Mr. Van Buren?
So the cost-benefit analysis that is contemplated as far as supporting the Third Crossing Project would be looking at a number of different costs and benefits, and obviously trying to monetize a value to any of those particular benefits and/or costs. The report does make mention of trying to do a qualitative assessment of the development potential opportunities that would exist within the immediate vicinity of the Third Crossing. So I guess in answer to your question, Counsel, it would not necessarily consider those, or it wouldn't distinguish between those being a benefit or a disbenefit. So in other words, the analysis would recognize the potential for both positive benefits or negative benefits, which would be counted as costs.
Okay, I mean, welcome what's here. And you're quite right, I mean, you're practically reading it, or you've memorized it, one or the other, which is fine. It says other socioeconomic factors. So the point is, a number of studies have indicated that low-density suburban development costs municipalities money, involves an ongoing tax increase to the existing population and/or households, whether they be homeowners or tenants. So there's considerable amount of research on that grounds. And so it seems to me, if the bridge can be seen as something that facilitates that kind of development, where the city ends up losing money, then it should be counted as a cost, and it should be factored in. And it goes, so this is, what I'm saying is, as I think, as stated, it is perhaps a little narrow, and, or a whole bunch narrow, it's hard to tell, but that's something that should be involved. And also, in a cost-benefit analysis, often you have, this is my second point, I want to know, often in a cost-benefit analysis, you're looking at comparisons of options. And I know that in engineering terms, you've looked at that certain, this whole Third Crossing story. And so is there going to be a comparison to the Third Crossing, to the possibility of maintaining the use of the causeway in the 401, including traffic counts?
Mr. Van Buren?
Again, through you, your worship, no. The environmental assessment that was completed for the Third Crossing Project was actually the opportunity to look at evaluating alternatives. So again, for the recollection of council, that particular work examined a number of different options that extended all the way from the 401 down to the La Salle Causeway in terms of trying to improve some of the transportation capacity across the Cataracque River. And that work concluded that the preferred option was the creation of a new capacity in the form of a bridge crossing that would link John County Boulevard in the west end to Gore Road in the east end. So the work associated with this cost-benefit analysis would purely just be looking at the benefits associated with completing a bridge at that location versus the costs associated with that particular project.
Okay, then, the point of that comparison I was citing too, is what was done before was not a cost-benefit analysis. It was an engineering traffic analysis, not the same thing. And so that's why I raised it here, because this appears to be what's being proposed here, at least it's hard to tell, but says additional economic, rather, other socioeconomic
Again, through you, your worship, that's not quite correct. The work that was undertaken as part of the environmental assessment looked at more than just the needs justification from a traffic perspective. And again, when work is done through an environmental assessment, it's looking at all of the different environmental factors, those being the natural environment, the social environment, the economic environment. All of those factors were taken into consideration in terms of evaluating all of the different options that were explored for improving that transportation capacity across the Cataracque
I think a number of things could be said about that, actually, but including the fact that I remember asking J.L. But including the fact that I remember asking J.R. Richards when they were proposing to do the, or when, on one of the reports about the EA, whether they had counted the traffic being used by the east side people on the 401. And they answered, no, they hadn't done it. The reasoning being is that the province indicates that it's not, the 401 is not to be used for that purpose. My question was, aside from what the province wants, what are people actually doing? And that was supposed to come out later. So I'm wondering if it's coming out now? Or did it ever come out? Because I don't remember it.
Through your worship, we can certainly review our files on that matter. I think some of the recollection of the discussion at that point in time through the environmental assessment process was certainly the fact that the Highway 401 was contemplated as far as the modeling work was concerned to look at whether or not the 401 was going to be a viable alternative route for traffic that was going to be traveling between city central and the east end. One of the commitments that staff did make was to continue to monitor the growth of traffic volume on the LaSalle Causeway. And that work does continue to this date where we're attempting to do a number of volume measurements of traffic on the Causeway at different points through the year.
Thank you, I agree that, with what you say about the Causeway and that staff have done that. The issue is what's happening on the 401 and what may be able to happen on the 401. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McLaren.
Thank you, and further on that, based on the questions that I sent to you earlier, that list that is there seems to be an open-ended list. Are we able to add things that should be monetized for considering value?
Through your worship, as the report reflects, the cost-benefit analysis work that is going to be undertaken is going to try to borrow on as much of a standardized approach to doing these cost-benefit analysis for transportation infrastructure projects. That being said, there will certainly be the opportunity to look at the specifics of this particular project. So to contextualize the Third Crossing and its environment, whether or not there may be other factors that should be considered and included in that cost-benefit analysis.
Thank you. And the second question, a little later in that paragraph, it says that the model will also assess qualitative manners, the potential for additional economic development within the area. Will this analysis consider the potential economic detriments of the project within the area, such as the increases in taxes from having to maintain the bridge for its lifetime? Or the cross purposes it induces against alternative travel modes? Or the loss of sustainability? And are we able to get any analysis of other qualitative values as well?
Through your worship, quick answer to that is, is yes. That on the cost side of the equation, the costs are not just restricted to the capital construction costs for the Third Crossing. This would look at the whole of life costs. So that would include ongoing operation and maintenance expenses associated with a new Third Crossing. So all of those costs would be considered through that cost-benefit analysis. I think that answers your question.
Thank you, yes. And a couple of lines even further below that. It says a public consultation will be included as an integral part of this work to ensure understanding of the model, socio-economic factors to be considered, and data requirements to support the model. This could be read in two ways, either as lecturing the public on the benefits of the model, or actually incorporating public concerns into the model. Which one is actually closer to your intended meaning?
This certainly would not be considered a lecture to, to the public. But we certainly do think that there's going to be a critical component of public education to certainly help the public understand what is involved in doing a cost-benefit analysis. Help them understand how some of these similar types of analysis have been done for other transportation infrastructure projects within North America. But certainly do allow for the public to have input into that process. And again, the idea here is that we want to try to incorporate as much of a standardized approach to doing this cost-benefit analysis, but appreciating the fact that this project will have its own unique characteristics and those may result in additional factors that we will consider as part of the cost-benefit analysis work.
Thank you. And the next question, in our need assessment that was or will be done, is there, has there been a consideration of the Democrat, or the demographic trend to lower population that we will be experiencing soon? Or the economic trend towards lower aggregate incomes? And/or the trend to lower real asset prices? And therefore the trend to lower assessment growth and a lower tax base to support municipal infrastructure? Will any of that be considered?
Again through your worship, so population and employment growth, information that the city collects on a regular interval is certainly very important information that goes into informing many of the city's master planning documents. And certainly that work then in turn goes towards helping to inform some of our long-range capital infrastructure requirements for the municipality. In turn, and as you'll know, that the city also prepares longer-term capital forecasts. So the 15-year capital budget that would certainly look at trying to see how projected revenues are going to match against some of those projected expenditures from an infrastructure perspective. So the answer to that would be yes, that those underlying changes in terms of demographics, be it population and employment growth, are factored in.
Thank you, and my last question is, the report also speaks of the next decision point prior to proceeding. When is this next decision point expected to be?
The action plan that we have presented previously to council saw us bringing a report in the spring of 2017. And that report would combine both information from Phase Two, which is the preliminary design work that the J.R. Richards consulting team is working at, and also information under this Phase Three, which is the business plan development. So the projected date for bringing that to council would be the spring of next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Neil.
Yes, I want to say I appreciate that we are going through Infrastructure Ontario. I've whined many times that they have capital available at a very low rate and they will indeed be doing their job if, if they do as we're requesting here. I know that Mr. Van Buren just spoke about the need for public education and public information in this process. So I believe I have an amendment which is written out that, that was seconded by councillor O'Sannick. And it reads, and I'll pass it on, yeah, I'm sorry, I just wrote it. So, but I'll pass it on to the clerks in just a second. It reads, "Be it resolved that the proposed Infrastructure Ontario Business Plan be presented to the community in a public meeting at EITP."
Thank you, so we have a motion to amend that's been put forward by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. We'll just take a moment just to type that up on the screen.
No problem. I could take a second or two just to, to do my presentation in favor of, of it, if I might. I think it's, it's very, very important that the public continues to be engaged in this process. And all that this does is it gives some direction so that the report won't just come to council, but indeed it'll go through our umbrella committee and give the public an opportunity to, to come out and reflect on, on what's being, what's being, what's being recommended to council in a business plan from Infrastructure Ontario. So I don't believe that, I'm not sure what the huddle is, but I don't believe that there, this would be contrary at all to the intent of the motion.
So if everyone has the gist of what that motion to amend is, we can allow the, the debate to continue. We're just waiting for the wording to go up on the screen. Councillor Holland?
That's just a question. So if, so when it goes to EITP, would there be any recommendations or report that is derived from that session that goes back to council? Or is it just presented as information?
So I think that that's, let's wait until we, we see what the wording is. So what, what we're going to do is we're going to have, once that's up on the screen, I'm going to ask staff if the proposed amendment would change the public consultation plan that was already envisioned. I think that that's probably the best, the best question. And if so, how?
Mr. Mayor, in response to that question, and maybe this will be assistive for the rest of council as well, is that what we were intending to do with the public consultation piece associated with the business planning work was to try to integrate that alongside with Phase Two, which is the preliminary design work. So when we approach the public and the first of those opportunities is going to be through the open house, which is going to be in September of this year, it would actually be a more coordinated way in which we would have that discussion with the public so that we could talk to them about the, the evolution of the design work associated with the Third Crossing. And then also with that same opportunity to talk to them about aspects of the business planning work, to seek that feedback and input. And then have that reflected back in terms of that report that would be, that would be coming back to council. There would be also a second opportunity to do that with the public. Again, that would be in the spring of 20, or sorry, the late winter of 2017 is kind of that second opportunity. Where again, more information, more detail related to the business planning work, reflecting the input that we receive from the public can be brought back to the public through that open house. The other thing I will take an opportunity to advertise is that there is a new and updated website for the Third Crossing project. And it certainly are intend to make as much use out of that tool to keep the public well-informed in terms of the process that we're going through, both on the design side and the business planning work.
So you don't have the floor right now councillor Neil? It's councillor Holland that has the floor. Do you have any further questions? Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Councillor Neil, you can speak last. Councillor Bohm?
Thank you, we're shipping through you. Hearing what staff says about the public consultation and realizing that this is an issue that should be decided by all of council, I have some concerns about it going to a committee with just six councillors on it. If it was just as information, fine. But having a public consult there without all of council there only serves a certain purpose. So if we were to do anything like that, I would like to see that public consultation happen through the process that staff has envisioned so that all of council can have access to that information. So for that reason, I will not be supporting the amendment to this.
Thank you. Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. When do we actually get to formally debate the merits of the Third Crossing? Is that in here somewhere?
So that's, that's a, not a question that's related to this motion to amend. This is only talking about how some of that information would be presented.
So my apologies, I meant to say it in the sense that this is asking for more possibility of debate. And I'm just wondering if this is the opportunity? Will there, and I'm curious as to when it will happen, before or after this? If it isn't this opportunity? And just so that I can be prepared to be either supported or not. So is there going to be a time when we actually debate the Third Crossing? Or is this a date at a complete? So may I ask, when is that?
Can I, can I get an answer from staff on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, the plan is to bring a report back to council for the spring of 2017. That would include work that would reflect the completion of work done on the design side for the Third Crossing and also work done on the business planning aspects for the Third Crossing. The intent is that that point in time to have a sufficient body of information for council then to make a decision point or about progressing that project through to its final phase, which would be the final design piece and the project implement.
So if I understand you correctly, spring of 2017 is the do or die moment?
I think that the answer from staff is that at 2017, once something comes back to council, then we will have a decision about what we would do with what's come back to us. So that would be your opportunity to debate it, councillor McLaren.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just to be sure, I mean, I prefer public meetings where staff can be in a much more informal space with the public. I find public meetings at, in this chamber can be a little intimidating. Much nicer to invite the public to, say Artillery Park or the Invista where it can be a big, open area. I just wanted to double check, you had said one public meeting before the spring of 2017. I thought you said another one in the fall of 2017. So I just wanted to make sure I knew when you were expecting to run these public meetings.
Mr. Van Buren?
So two public meetings, the first one would be the fall of this year, 2016. The second one would be very likely late winter of 2017.
Thanks, that just confirms. So the, the second one would be sort of after the do or die meeting, as councillor McLaren mentioned. Just wanted to get that straight, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and recognize you.
Thank you. I would just like to echo the concern that councillor Bohm raised. This is no doubt one of the biggest issues that we will deal with as a council. So it's important, in my view, that we have lots of public consultation. But also that when it comes to, to council, it comes to all of us. And that's my concern with having a public meeting at EITP. So in my view, it's much better to encourage the kind of public consultation and public input. We will get lots of it. We will have all kinds of debates and conversations in the community over the next year. There's note about, this is not about saying no to public consultation. This is about saying, instead, we want a broader set of public consultation and then have everything come back to council. So that's why I have discomfort with this. So for that reason and that reason only, I'm going to vote against the amendment. But I appreciate the point that's been raised. And certainly I look forward to all of the opportunities for the public to be able to learn more and for us to be able to discuss the benefits and the costs with the Third Crossing. Thank you.
I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on the motion to amend? Councillor Hutchinson?
Yes. Is there, I can sort of understand what the mayor's saying, what councillor Bohm said. The one thing though is, if it comes to EITP, like lots of reports do, or MIMPALE, or name one, right? Does that prevent, I don't see that ruling out what staff has proposed. It's just an additional consultation session. Or in a somewhat more informal setting, as councillor Shell was pointing out, I don't see why one rules out the other. In fact, I would hope it wouldn't. And, and I would believe that the report from Infrastructure Ontario, maybe staff could correct me if I got this wrong. It's my understanding that, that, we just had this turn up a little while ago. had this turn up a little while ago. Oh, with the KTEMPE, okay, that the consultant's report... This would have the status of a consultant's report, would it? Or what kind of... What status would this report from Infrastructure Ontario have?
That's correct. This would have the status of a consultant's report. We will have a final report coming from Infrastructure Ontario. Also, that would be on the procurement side. We'll have a separate report from Collins Vera, who is the consultant undertaking the cost benefit analysis.
Enough. So my understanding, and staff can correct me on this, is that a committee cannot, in fact, and I'm sure council can do this, cannot change a consultant's report. The consultant has to do it willingly after hearing input from whoever. Is that not the status of it? They can't vote to change a consultant's report. That's their professional opinion, and that's what they're given to you. You can like it or not. It doesn't really matter. That's my understanding. Is that correct? In a situation like this? Like, it's not a report from our own staff. It's a third party.
Mr. Van Buren?
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with that statement.
So the answer is yes?
I guess what I would say is that this would allow the reports to come to council and to the committee. What have we got to lose? It's just a matter of different ways of consulting the public. It's just asking that we consult the public in a different way, through a different channel, leading to the same stream of process. So I don't see any reason to be against it. Certainly from a public point of view. So, you know, I'll vote for it, unless somebody can explain to me why it would be different.
Counselor Cannon?
Thank you, and through you. I guess I'll keep this quick, but having gone through the KEDCO review, I know that community input is extremely important, but I also do know that there is... There can be a line to that, where things start to become repetitive. So community input, obviously, we'll welcome that every time, but if we have an avenue to create that environment where the community can give their input, there is a moment where things do become repetitive. And I think in this particular instance, this may be one of them. So I will be voting against the amendment, just because I do think that we have created the avenue for community input, and eventually things become a little bit lethargic, and it slows us down, and it does become repetitive. So I think when Jim brought it forward originally, I thought I was going to support it, but then when I heard the response, I realised that I think all the measures are in place, so I will be voting against the motion.
So Counselor Neal, you have the right to speak last. However, as the chair, I think I'm going to have to rule this out of order. And the reason for that is that our standing committees are for policy development, and this is not a policy issue.
I speak briefly to this, because at EITP, in all honesty, was the last thing I wrote after I'd written the first part of the amendment. I am not locked into the idea that it has to come through EITP. My intent was that the final report would have an opportunity for some public scrutiny. And I don't care if it's at EITP. The reason I put at EITP is I was thinking, which committee has, under their terms of reference, would this fall? And that's naturally EITP. But with the consent of my seconder, I'm quite happy to drop the at EITP. And all that I was hoping for was to have an opportunity for the community and the public to look at the final report prior to it coming to council. And that was my only intent. I said at EITP, because that's often where we have public meetings, when they have to do with transportation issues. But it doesn't have to be EITP. It can be a regular, organised, public meeting. So...
Okay. So with the agreement of the seconder, then we'll propose a friendly amendment to remove at EITP. So now we have... And that the proposed Infrastructure Ontario business plan be presented to the community in a public meeting?
Thank you. That was my intent.
Okay, so before we call the vote, then, on this motion to amend, can I get a comment from staff? Is there anything in this amendment that is different from what was already proposed in the work plan moving forward with respect to the business plan?
Your worship, no.
So effectively, this motion to amend is redundant. I can't rule it out of order, but we've heard what staff have said, that it's redundant. So we can call the vote? Counselor Neal, you do have the right to speak last?
Yes, if I could just complete my comment, if I could. My concern is that I applaud, and I'm very thankful that the public consultation is going on through the process. But sometimes we have had consultant's reports that have had public consultation, but the report itself comes directly to council. And it doesn't give the public, the community, an opportunity to look at where their... How their consultation has been reflected in the report. And that's my sole intent, is to make sure that the final draft, which, as Counselor Hutchinson says, is indeed a consultant's report, has an opportunity for the public to have some input in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote, then, on the motion to amend. And that loses on a tie. Okay, so on the motion, or on the item as not amended, is there any further discussion? Counselor Stroud?
I have a question for staff, and for my benefit and the benefit of those following along, about specifically the change in wording to... About the business plan. So I understand from reading the report, that government grants are in response to a presented business plan. It's a format that they require. Is that the only reason for the change in the wording from what we approved last time, which was for a financial plan? If you could just explain the difference between a financial plan and the business plan, so that it's clear in people's minds, and then that would be good.
Mr. Van Buren?
As here, your worship. I think as we contemplated the work that was ahead of us, we believe that the word of a financial plan was a little too narrow in scope, and that that work was only just going to really reflect, really looking at the funding sources for the eventual implementation of the project, and really to reflect the intent of some of the recommendations that were in the environmental assessment. It was really more about a more comprehensive business plan, which, again, as the report reflects, was an opportunity to kind of complement the work that was done through the environmental assessment, where the environmental assessment really explored the technical feasibility for the project. The business plan was then to support things more from an economic feasibility perspective. So one of the very specific recommendations in the environmental assessment was to look very critically at the project delivery models, be those traditional or non-traditional project delivery models. So that constitutes one very specific aspect of this business planning work. The other piece was to undertake this cost benefit analysis, and really that was to give, again, more information for council to make a decision as it relates to the go or no-go for this project.
So if I understand it correctly, the cost benefit analysis and the specific business plan format that we need to apply for grants are the two things that are more contained in the word business plan that wouldn't be contained in the more narrow financial plan?
That's correct. And certainly, our intent is to seek grant funding from upper levels of government, both provincial and federal. Preparation of a business plan of this nature will be very supportive in terms of seeking those potential grant opportunities.
Okay, so I actually think it would be great if we heard from the public before we debated this large project. And we're going to hear from them once this fall, in a public meeting, and then there'll be another public meeting in late 2017. Is that correct? Spring? Spring 2017. Spring 2017 is... Okay, so is that one before the actual debate and one after the debate? Is that the timing of the public meetings?
Mr. Van Buren?
Again, sorry for the confusion, but to clarify, there will be two points of public engagement before the report would come to council. So one this fall, one very early in the new year, and then that would create the information that then would be presented in a report to council in the spring of 2017.
Yeah, so thank you for confirming that. That's the reason I voted against Counselor Neal's amendment, because there was two public meetings in the process already. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognise you.
Thank you. I think I'd like to say only that I think we all recognise that this is a big project for our community. And what's clear is that in order to make this shovel-ready, we have to do our homework. And this is really about doing our homework. We're not only doing a preliminary design, but we're going to do a cost benefit analysis. We're going to look at the big picture, the big scope, and this is all part of the homework that we need to do anyways, if we're going to be successful in acquiring funds from the province and the federal government. So I look forward to having all of this in front of us about a year from now. It's going to be a really good discussion and a really good debate. But ultimately, these are all the pieces that we agreed as council as part of our strategic plan, that we would get this project to that shovel-ready point, and then we'll make a decision from there. So thank you very much. Happy to support it.
I return the chair.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on item two. And that carries by a vote of nine to four. Item three, fourth quarter operating budget And that carries. Report number 48 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 48 from the Planning Committee, and ask that it be received and adopted.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Neal, that report number 48 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there are the three items. Would anyone like them separated? Seeing them, we will vote on them as a whole. Number one is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 462 Berry Street. Number two, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 169 Union Street. And number three, approval of an application for draft plan of subdivision and zoning bylaw amendment 2939 Creekford Road, Phase Two and Three. We will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 49 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present number... Report number 49 from the Planning Committee, and ask that it be received and adopted. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Neal, that report number 49 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
There's just the one clause, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 14 Garrett Street. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report number 50 from Heritage Kingston.
Thank you, your worship. It is my pleasure to present report number 50 from New Committee Heritage Kingston, moved and seconded, and ask that council adopt it.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Shell, that report number 50 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
There's just the one item, approval of a heritage permit under the Ontario Heritage Act 148 Berry Street. Counselor Stroud?
Just have one thing to say on this. It's similar to the other heritage item. This item that you see here came to the new Heritage Kingston as business item, sorry, as an information report for consultation purposes, and it was an example of a successful consultation. There were folks on the committee that made suggestions in a pre-consultation phase... There was two phases, because it came before the old committee, and in a pre-consultation. Anyway, it was a very successful interaction, where the applicant took many suggestions from members of the committee and incorporated them in their work. And I think that sort of informal process was great. And I'd like to thank staff for all the work for setting that up, and for the final result you see here.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 51 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee.
I'm happy to present report number 51 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Holland, that report number 51 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
There's just the one item, City of Kingston 2015 Multi-Year Accessibility Plan Status Report. We'll call the vote. And that carries. We have two information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand. Number one, tender and contract awards, subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of February 2016. Number two, 2016 Priority Status Matrix Update. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, so we have a few motions. Number one, that as requested by Gabrielle Eaton, Executive Director, Event Designer, Publisher, council designate the Women Mean Business Summer Kickoff Third Annual Business Mixer, being held Thursday, June 2, 2016, from 4:30 to 7:30 PM at BMW Kingston 1412 Bath Road, Kingston, as an event of municipal significance, to which special occasion permits may be issued by the Alcohol and Gaming Commissioner of Ontario. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. And that carries. Number two, that is requested by Doug Brooks, owner of Burnt Hills Farm. Council designate the Burnt Hills Farm to Table Dinner, being held Saturday, July 23, 2016, with a rain date of July 24, 2016, from 3 PM to 10 PM at Burnt Hills Farm, located at 3582 Burnt Hills Road, Sealese Bay, Ontario, as an event of municipal significance, to which special occasion permits may be issued by the Alcohol and Gaming Commissioner of Ontario. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Bohm. and Gaming Commissioner of Ontario. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Bohm. Please vote. And that carries. Number three, that is requested by the Kingston Frontenac Lennox and Addington United Way. Council proclaim May third, 2016, as Youth Homelessness Awareness Day in the City of Kingston. Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Holland. And number four, from the addits, that is requested by Y2K Kingston Youth Strategy Organization. Council proclaim May first to the seventh, 2016, as National Youth Week in the City of Kingston. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor George. And that carries. Onto new motions. Number one, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Stroud. Whereas the City of Kingston is always looking for ways to improve the safety of its residents, visitors, and tourists, whereas the Kingston Transportation Master Plan recognizes road safety as a key component of effective transportation systems management, whereas the City of Kingston has undertaken a number of road safety initiatives in the absence of a comprehensive road safety program, therefore be it resolved that staff provide a report to the Environment, Infrastructure, and Transportation Committee by Q1 of 2017, with the terms of reference and the anticipated cost and schedule for the development of the strategic road safety program for the City of Kingston. Counselor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and through you and recognizing the time. I think we had this debate earlier, actually, about this motion. So I just hope everybody supports this. It is about making the streets safer. We now have all options on the table. And I think that in the end, this will bring forward a progressive solution that essentially increases safety. And I hope everybody will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal?
Yes, I support this motion. I just wanted a quick question of staff who will be tasked with doing this report. I would assume that some of the discussion tonight regarding the potential for increasing traffic constables and that kind...those kinds of things will be part of the report. So it would...and I would assume also that you'll have an opportunity to consult extensively with the police services.
Ms. Green?
Through you, your worship. We have had a look at the road safety strategic plans completed by both the City of London and the City of Ottawa. And some of the partners that we would be working with would be Kingston City Police, the KFLNA Public Health Unit, Ministry of Transportation, Ontario, CAA, as well as Young Drivers of Canada. So if we look at other programs done in the province, some of those specific categories that we would look into, we certainly would include police in these conversations. And enforcement would be a huge part of that. So we would be looking at intersections, distracted and aggressive driving, young drivers, pedestrians, cyclists, as well as red light running. And then within that component of intersection analysis, we could continue to look at the clearance times at our traffic signals.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Along the same lines, I'm just making it clear to myself that what we're expecting by the first quarter of 2017 is the beginning of the actual process, not a terms of reference about hiring a consultant.
Ms. Green?
We are suggesting that we would bring simply the terms of reference. What we have heard from the other municipalities is that this can be a two-year process. So this would just be the beginnings of just looking at the scope of work. And then after that, we would be looking at engaging a consultant to complete the work.
Did I see anybody else's hand? Counselor Hutchinson, did you put your hand up?
It's possible. The...I just...so I think the answer to my question, it was perhaps in the last reply from staff. And that is, I was wondering exactly what a strategic road safety program is, and how does it differ from what we're doing now?
Ms. Green?
So we already are doing a number of road safety initiatives. We already have a network screening program that identifies high collision locations. We maintain a collision database. We do meet regularly with Kingston City Police. We have a traffic calming program. We have an ongoing program to review appropriate posted speed limits. We have a program to install oversized stop signs with flashing red beacons at rural intersections. We have ongoing retimes of traffic signals. And we have a detailed traffic counting program that helps assess pedestrian needs and where we need traffic control. So what the road safety strategy would do is provide an overall comprehensive plan for traffic safety in the city that would identify the most important traffic safety issues. And it would set targets, policies, and actions that would guide not only the City of Kingston, but Kingston City Police, as well as the Health Unit and other local partners, to create safer roads and reduce traffic collisions within the city.
Okay, so what I get from that is an overall strategy that we don't have now. Right? Thank you. That's okay. Thanks.
Counselor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. I just have a quick question. Could that also include traffic light synchronization? Because I think that sometimes if you get too many red lights in a row, then that contributes to yellow light running anyway. Because when you come up to the next intersection, you want to make sure you at least get one green and accelerate through. So I just wondered if that could be included, too?
Yes, when we look at intersection safety, the traffic signal coordination is a very key component of that. And that is something that ongoing, we are re-timing our traffic signals. So by the end of this year, all one hundred and eighty-four of our traffic signals will have been re-timed between this year and last year.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. It strikes me that this should be part of our transportation master plan in general. Like, it strikes me that we haven't been doing this in our transportation planning yet. It is so integral to have a strategic framework in part of our major plans. And I'm wondering if we can't integrate this into our upcoming transportation master plan process that we've already sort of outlined a process for, if that might be possible.
Ms. Green?
The road safety strategic plan is really a component of transportation systems management, which in turn is identified within the Kingston Transportation Master Plan. So we have the KTMP as our very high-level strategic document, which feeds into all of these more detailed plans. And so, pardon me, we would look at this road safety plan as far too detailed to be included within the KTMP. So certainly, anything can be done. But what we are seeing other municipalities complete is these very specific roadway safety plans.
Okay, so just so I understand it, like our active transportation master plan or our trip survey, household travel survey data that we gather would be something that's granular, that feeds into the overall master planning process to help us make our decisions in our master plan. So it, as you said, is part of the transportation systems management program. But we...because it's so detailed in its approach, it would not...we would not see policies or recommendations bubble up into the transportation master plan level.
Yes, that's correct. You might see policies and recommendations. A lot of those would be operational. But we believe that those would be best contained within that specific roadway strategic program.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got to ask.
Thank you. So Counselor Turner?
Thank you, and through you. Just a quick question for you. In terms of when you look at the study, could you possibly have a look at extending the red lights, if it's a possibility? It may not be a favorable possibility, but when they approach an intersection, the extending the yellow lights versus cost-saving and return on investment versus the cameras? So if we could extend the red lights, maybe creating a better, safe environment when cars come and pass through intersections?
Ms. Green?
We could certainly look at clearance times as part of the roadway strategic safety plan. What I will note is, we already do operate the all-red intervals after the amber. And the all reds are established by the Ministry of Transportation, Ontario, as well. And they are dependent on the width of the intersection and the posted speed limit. So they do vary throughout the city. And we are meeting those minimum requirements at this time. But we certainly could reevaluate that as part of this strategic road safety plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on motion number one. And that carries. Motion number two, moved by Counselor George, seconded by Mayor Patterson. Whereas the federal government and the Bank of Canada have issued a request for nominations of a woman to be honored on the face of their new banknotes. And whereas Molly Brant, also known as, oh, boy, Kenwazi Tassini, is a generally unrecognized Canadian heroine. And whereas she was famous in her own right and played an important role in both Native and British culture in Kingston, Ontario during the loyalists period. And whereas through the early part of the American Revolution, Molly Brant sheltered and fed loyalists and sent arms and ammunition to those who were fighting for the king. And whereas Molly Brant was expected to use her influence over the Mohawk warriors, as she was in a position to use the colonial administration to increase her political power to promote the interests of her people. And whereas after the war, no provisions have been made for the Iroquois in the Treaty of Paris of seventeen eighty-three. And it has been suggested that Molly Brant used her influence on behalf of her people at this time to have land on the Bay of Quinte granted to the Iroquois. And whereas it was decided in seventeen eighty-three that Cataracway would be a good place for the settlement of the loyalists, and at which time Molly Brant decided to settle at Cataracway, at which time she was assigned Farm Lot A in Kingston Township. And whereas sadly, on April sixteenth, seventeen ninety-six, Molly Brant, a true Canadian heroine, died and was laid to rest in the barrow grounds of Saint George's Church, located at what became the corner of Queen Street and Montreal Street, where Saint Paul's Church now stands. But sadly, the exact location of her plot is unknown. Therefore, be it resolved that the council for the City of Kingston support the nomination of Molly Brant for consideration as a new face on the Canadian banknote for 2018, and that this resolution be forwarded to the Office of MP Mark Garretson and the Office of Prime Minister Justin Trudeau. Counselor George?
Thank you, your worship. And I certainly appreciate councils allowing this to be entertained this evening as an added. And I can briefly explain why. Because I didn't realize until early last week that, in fact, the deadline for nomination was actually April fifteenth, which was Friday. So luckily enough, I had a little pull with the mayor, and he was able to have his staff fill out the necessary forms online and get them to the committee, the standing committee that will be making the selection process. In the meantime, I did have a discussion with Mr. Garretson. And he felt, and so did I, that it was important that we, as Kingstonians, those of us here representing Kingstonians, present a recommendation of ours to this committee to show that we certainly support this individual. In my email to you on Friday, where I gave you a bit of a heads-up that this was coming forward, I did mention that they have an extremely good article on the Kingston Archaeological website. And I hope all of you had an opportunity to read it. Because this is a very, very fine Reader's Digest version of the heroic life that this lady led for a very short period of time. And today's day and age to pass at the age of sixty is not as common as it was back then. So she did leave and did a lot for Canada in a very short period of time, and for her native background as well. I know that the standing committee, Mr. Garretson, has indicated to me that if council supports this recommendation this evening, that he will present it to the standing committee in person. So we have the assurance that it will be provided to them and be given true consideration. So I won't go into all of the heroics that this individual was involved in over the years of service to the King and everything that she did. And it's just coincidental, actually, that you put loyalists and Cataracway together, and that happens to be the district I represent in Kingston. But it wasn't intended to be that way. But having said that, I'm very honored to have the opportunity to present this recommendation to council and hope that you will support this. And we can recognize an individual who has done so much for our country and for her native people back in the mid seventeen hundreds, and became a very early Kingstonian. As we all know, Kingston Township was the first official township in the province of Ontario. And she was one of the early settlers here. And so I think it's certainly fitting that we nominate someone from our region that did so much for us in the past. And I know that we probably will be hearing, I don't know if there are other communities, I'm sure across Canada, that are making nominations of those they feel are worthy of the honor of having their portrait on the newest Canada banknote. But we'll do what we can to see if our region and our heroic member of Canada can be that individual. So I'm hoping for everyone's support here this evening. And I won't...I don't know that there's a lot of questions I can ask. If there are, again, I'm just hoping that you took the time to read the bio on this woman and can support everything that she's done for the history of this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. I'm very delighted to see this come forward and to support it. And one of the reasons for that is that the new public school, the amalgamated First Avenue and Frontenac Public Schools, will be named Molly Brant. And the name was chosen by students of those schools. They're very proud of the name. And they've worked really hard with the transition, which will be complete as of September. They'll be starting at that new school. So for this reason, I would like to ask for a friendly amendment to perhaps also send the resolution forwarded to the Principals of First Avenue Public School and Frontenac Public Schools, so that they're aware that this initiative has been put forward by council. Thank you. And if it's not friendly, I can work on that.
Okay, so we'll just note that, if that's okay, if that's...we consider that to be a friendly amendment, if that's reasonable. Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson?
It's in the same vein. First of all, let me applaud Counselor George for bringing this forward on this very important individual, and the mayor for seconding it. I'm just wondering why we're not...this is an all committee, all-party committee, I believe. So is there any reason not to send him to the leader of the opposition and the leaders of the NDP and the Green Party?
So...
And I just think...
So I believe, Counselor George can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll leave it. This was the direction that was provided by MP Garretson on the best way to put that forward. So...okay, so seeing no other comment, we will call Counselor Stroud.
Just I want to just quickly point out how large the stature of Molly Brant is historically. We know about her here in Kingston, but she's renowned in other places, Ontario, as well. I've heard her mentioned in Toronto. She's Joseph Frant's sister, so historically, who's also an important historical figure. And the people that in Western Ontario that know about that part of history will know the connection. So it's also a connection to other Ontarians with the very important historical time of the late seventeen hundreds that Counselor George was talking about. So thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the vote on motion number two. And that carries. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Holland, that the minute of City Council Meeting number two thousand sixteen dash twelve, held Tuesday, April fifth, two thousand sixteen, be confirmed?
Please vote. And that carries. We have some tabling of documents and communications. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, all... Seeing none, Mr Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Bohm, that bylaws one through ten be given their first and second reading?
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Bohm, that bylaws three through ten be given their third reading?
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Neil. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.